That we can give them the foundation start of $100,000 and hopefully the community could begin to raise some funds and hopefully it would be successful. There was a group formed called Light Up The Lake. They were sort of, they started off with a bang with the hope of making money. I think it became more difficult than they had initially thought. There wasn't any large sponsors that could be found immediately. There was no easy grants that they could come up with. So the $100,000 has been sitting there. Our athletic director went out to Musco, who are a group that appears to be the light pole group that everybody uses, and came up with a lease purchase proposal which is in your package. The estimated cost of the project is $316,712 for four poles. I'm going to repeat that again because personally I find mine bothering. So for four light poles, it is $316,712. If we were to do a five-year lease, we would put our $100,000 down and for five years we would pay $38,709.89 a year. The cost of that lease on top of the financing piece would add an extra $26,837.45 to the cost. That's the interest cost. Option two is a seven-year lease. We would put the $100,000 down, which is the budgeted by our capital plan. The monthly, the yearly fee would be $36,832.75. The interest cost for a seven-year lease is $41,117.25. Option three is a 10-year lease. We put our $100,000 down. The cost per year is $28,152.30. The interest cost for a 10-year lease is $64,811. So that's just to give you the money. On the back of your timeline, the athletic director, I asked her to put down how many times we actually used the lights because there was a lot of numbers flying around. So we, I asked her to go through last year's actual light usage, the amount of times the kids were on the field with the lights. So for boys soccer night games, there were seven night games that took place. Actually, it was six, I guess one game ended up being played in an afternoon. Girls soccer night games, there were six. There was one field hockey senior night game. There were three. Football games that were played at night. There were 15 days of use for after daylight savings time where they had to do their practices on there. There was one female flag football game against Pembroke. And there were two lacrosse senior night games on Syracuse Field. So to my knowledge, and I believe I'm correct, this is the most accurate information that I'm aware of on the history of the football field lights.
Thank you, Joanne. I'll open up the discussion to the committee at this point.
I guess I'll start. I feel a little out of place because although I was at the last meeting as an observer, you know, this is kind of a lot to sort of step into. So some of my questions may be naive, some just might be answerable very quickly, but if you don't mind, can I just go through a couple of them?
Absolutely.
Personally, I think it makes you good, but this is really the first time any of us are seeing this information in this depth. Just so everybody knows that we really haven't seen, we saw briefly the lease information at the last meeting, but you know, this is all pretty new to all of us.
Okay, so one favor.
I think your question is going to be a whole lot.
Maybe I'll have everybody in favor then. Okay. So based on the data that you presented, Joanne, I'm sort of wondering about the option of an outright purchase versus a lease, not necessarily knowing where that money is going to come from. Because obviously the costs of the loan are significant. The option three for us with the $28,000 yearly payment is obviously more palatable for a longer period of time, but it's going to cost us a lot more. So what is the cost, the cost of the four poles and the lights for an outright purchase is $316,712. So when I went back and looked at the capital plan that was in our binder, right now the capital plan for the 2018-2019 outlay that you're expecting is about $491,000. So I guess for me, one of my, my first question would be, I thought from what I understood that that $490,000 was higher at some point, around $700,000-ish, don't quote me, and some things fell off the list, which is understandable. So I guess I'm wondering what fell off the list in terms of how did you prioritize that? Because, I mean, it seems to me like an outright purchase would just, you know, it would happen. And to be honest, I mean, as well-intentioned as everybody in this room is, if we sign a lease to for five years, seven years, or 10 years, the only, only group that's going to be on the hook for that money is the school committee and the budgets they're in, correct?
So to put that into perspective, where the capital plan was generated from, comes from a subcommittee. I prefer to call it buildings and grounds, but we have destroyed the name and we call it SAFE right now. It's an acronym for things I don't even know what they are.
Facility fees and everything.
If you look at next year's projection, 18, 19, our capital plan stands at about a million dollars. Now, we understand that some of those things are going to need to be prioritized, pared down and become more digestible. Another thing that needs to be acknowledged here is every time that we fund the capital plan from E and D, we have to ask the towns at town meeting to allow us to access those funds to use for the capital plan. Luckily, the towns have supported us for the past few years on articles for those specific purchases. The items that are currently on there are things that would be pushed from other groups. One of the major impediments to our capital plan is that we had, it's called an envelope study of our two buildings. The crown jewels of Silver Lake are our buildings. And we had intense water mitigation issues, intense. Some of the numbers that were being put around just to deal with water mitigation was a million dollars for a building. We've done a lot of this work in house. We've hired a facilities manager to help us maximize our resources here. But the items that you see on there, one of them is a plaque. That plaque that we had to replace was a plaque that we welded together ourselves here with C2B kids two times at least that I know of. So as Joanne mentioned, we are almost municipality unto ourselves. So to fully fund this this year would then again push back some of the major items, potentially items that could cost us more money if we push on. Even some of these items go for crowning the buildings and for maintenance of the buildings themselves. We've devoted them to the capital plan this year. So the items that are there were parsed over quite heavily from September all the way through to town meeting by a subcommittee that's basically comprised of almost the entire committee itself. That's how seriously we take the capital plan. Just to answer that question, I would love to be able to purchase the lights upfront from my own personal construction. We do not have the financial capabilities, in my opinion, to do that outright purchase right now without superior guidance from other portions of our capital.
Okay. That's helpful. I mean, I did see the library and the high school potentially half closed for several months because of water, you know, yeah? Yeah, I saw those issues. One of the things I guess for me, and you know, I don't have any, I don't have a dog in this fight, so you know, I'm just purely trying to understand this issue and make, and listen to the community, who are all going to come to every school committee meeting from now on, right? Because that's very important. You know, the accepting donations, like I looked in our binder where you have accepted a lot of donations and gosh, it's so incredible how many companies and organizations and individuals have donated to our school system. But it does, you know, kind of question for me, like we got to be kind of careful about accepting donations because once we accept it, not only do we accept it, we accept it for life, right? So fantastic the soccer team and the soccer boosters did what they did 30 years ago, but we, we own it, right? So we have to maintain it. And it sounds like you've laid out a really interesting plan about, you know, what happened and it's logical. But you know, we, we, there are other options, I think, for funding, but they're not going to be immediate. But we have to sign a lease that only puts us on the hook. So whether or not anybody, whether it's a CPC application, or fundraising, or anything else, which, or the state house, fantastic, that comes in is just, it's just good faith, right? I mean, and so we have to know that we go to town meeting every year, call all three town meetings and ask for whatever number we take here. And so what happens then if we don't, it's not approved? We're on it, we're hooked on it, right?
If we sign this lease, it becomes one of our debt obligations that we begin the budget gap. We don't begin at zero, we begin with all our debt obligations.
So theoretically, if we go to a town meeting and it doesn't approve this part of our capital plan, the purchase part of it, where does that money come from? Because we're obligated, right?
It's going to come from our operating.
It's going to, I'm just asking the obvious question. I think I know the answer, but I wanted to hear it out. Am I right? You're going through the process, we need to, you're absolutely right, it would be operating. And that's for anything that you haven't, anything you've signed an agreement to. I mean, obviously a lot of these things on the capital plan are, are one-offs, right? So you don't, you don't just give them the field, you don't buy, you don't replace the Kubota, you don't buy, you know, whatever. But this is like an obligation, so it comes out of the operating budget?
Well, again, that would be a decision that would be made, but if we were to agree to the lease, in my mind, that would go in the capital plan for the next five years. Because to be honest with you, our capital plan, hopefully, we can get that number down and at least pay a portion of it out of our E and D. Every time we add to our budget, what will happen is, what we've been struggling with is there's, if I may quote Mr. Creed, "There's only so many paper clips that you can cut from the budget." All of our paper clips are gone. We have no supplies left. We're down to teachers. And you know, I've been superintendent for three years, I was nine years as assistant superintendent. For the last three years, I mean, I have been fighting tooth and claw to not cut teachers. And there definitely is a move that people feel we need to cut teachers, that, you know, they really want us to cut our staff. And I truly believe our staff is our most important commodity. I mean, I love football, please understand that, but teachers for us guys, sorry. So you know, the teachers to me are what really matters. So if we put that $50,000 in the budget, that's a starting, actually it's a little higher, but it's a teacher, you know, that's a body. So you know, to me, I would prefer to see if we can get it into E and D, excuse me, get it into the capital plan that hopefully we can fund from E and D or at least a good portion of it from E and D. Anytime we, we have to fund our capital plan from the budget, then it's going forward to the towns. The towns don't mind supporting our capital plan if we're self-funding it. It doesn't hurt them. You know what I mean? They're supportive of it. If, if the capital plan comes apart the budget, the overall budget just gets cut. We as a school committee, line item economy, have to decide where we're cutting it from. So it, it is an issue, it is an obligation. You know, I love the passion, I would love if we could get some grants, I would love if the state house could come through. You know, any of those things could happen, but honestly, if we make this commitment, it is on us. If they come through, yay. But I don't think we can guarantee that that would happen, even with the best of intentions.
And then there's another question, which is probably the dumbest question on the face of the earth, but it is, it was it is. So you know, I work at what's coalition graphic and most of our costs are mowing and demowing. So you know, it's not actually going to see sometimes it's getting there, you know. So you know, my initial thought is, well, with $100,000, let's buy two lights, you know. And I'm not saying that's going to be the solution for the field, but I'm just saying if you got, the money you have is what you, what you spend. But I assume that's not even an option because the mow and demo for, for it is just, it's expensive.
I, I believe that to be true. We had sort of thought the same thing. You know, I don't know if our athletic director may could help us out, he probably has the most, the most information about that.
You know, the Musco Lighting Company has the lights, the uninstalled lights on state bid for around $180,000. It's the install cost that brings it up significantly. And that install cost is the one that's subjective, obviously, the number 317. They start high, I talked to the representative from Musco and he believes he can get the contractor real sharp and his pencil will understand a little bit better what we're dealing with in terms of cost. The good news is we're not installing, we have electrical runs already out there. So we have kind of the infrastructure. So there is a way you can procure the lights themselves off state bid. So I don't know if that answers the question.
Yeah, let me answer this now.
Ed?
This goes to special town meetings. Does it fall the same way as the one in budget where the two towns go forward, the third town has to go forward?
Well, we've already allocated $100,000.
Okay.
So if we were to enter into this, we already have to sign a lease. The risk going forward by entering into this.
Because I remember one of you in the audience said that you think you have the communities behind you. I know one community that would be against us during this period. And it's partially because of Mr. Creed. Same thing at our town meeting in Halifax. It was no one there, next to no one there. Our vote just went by. Less than 400 people came up to vote. You got to participate. When it's other things, you're going to have to participate. More about football if you could just be partially as interested in everything, it would be very helpful. It takes all of us to make it work. Thing is, if everybody showed up to vote, you get the need all the time. Nobody seemed around this table right now anything to do with, oh god, say it before our turn. Point is, going from this point, this is from, I hate using a computer, but it's the easiest place that I would go to. When this school was built, it was one of the most expensive buildings to build as far as public schools in the state of Massachusetts at the time. I'd love to have access to the contractors because there was very little oversight. The things we're having problems with, quite a few little mistakes. And that's unfortunate because of the way the government and system works. But there are things that were not done in these buildings that were built. There's no excuse that they weren't done. And right in here even mentions that the building was done, but Syracuse Field is Go by 90% of high schools in the country, you see lots. Friday Night Lights is not just a local thing, it's a nationwide thing. And it is somewhat of an absentee that this can't be resolved. I'm sorry, Jason, you've said that I'm kind of immoral personally. I know I'm probably making some people in this room very mad, very pissed off, I don't care. Point is, there were things that were overlooked but were not taken care of a long time ago. We've got a big mess on our hands and we need to do something for that. Realization, I know what the money situation is, but there's got to be something you can do to get those lights out. It's not fair to these kids. We supposed to care about these kids? Prove it. That's put on this school. As a matter of fact, my first night here, one of our former, former school committee members tried to make, tried to make that I have to step down. So understand that I have issued lots of stuff. Sorry, I've got too much time, but then again, I haven't talked much.
Both?
I don't know how many of you folks are from Halifax and how many of you have been at town meeting, but we've been challenged before, a couple of years ago on spending from E and D. We've got questions, we had to answer them in detail. I know one question, and I'm, I'm not opposed to finding a solution here, but I need to balance it against the, the financial needs that we have for school. I know one question I would get standing in front of town meeting in Halifax, and I hope every Halifax parent is going to be there with me, is what's the impact? How many nights do we use these lights? And I think the total is 33. I don't, we spent two nights one year talking about a lawnmower at Halifax Town Meeting. I, I don't know how 33 needs, 33 nights would go over in Halifax. I also have a question, and this is more of a legal one, I, I don't know how we could deal with it. If we put $100,000 down and these folks are committing to doing fundraising, which I think is the right answer, and I think it's wonderful. We're on the hook if the fundraising doesn't come through. What kind of agreement, we've got a lot of momentum in this room right now, which is wonderful. What kind of agreement could be put in place that there's expectations, that there's numbers on the table for fundraising to come through before town meeting, before we have to do a budget, before we have to decide to take from E and D or wherever it's going to come from? What does that look like can't be done? It might be a question for Fred, I don't know.
I don't believe we could hold the public accountable. It would certainly be a good faith effort on their part. I have no doubt they would do their best, but you know, anyone who's ever tried to do fundraising, it worked sometimes and sometimes not so much. I, you know, I believe they would certainly put forth the effort, but I do not believe there's any legal obligation we could hold them to.
Or is there a parameters document, is there, is there a letter of understanding? That could be a Fred. Okay. Fred's our legal counsel.
I guess my other question on following on that one is, have we ever in the past used this kind of funding for something that's in perpetuity like a lease? Not in perpetuity, but in, what are some other examples? I'm very nervous about signing a lease for money that we don't have. And it's not, it's just a financial thing. It's not that I'm not opposed to a lease, but have we had any other experiences with this?
Not to this scope, we have, we've had some small projects, and with the athletic director for scoreboards, and then maybe there's been some partial donation or donations from certain groups. And when we commit to that project, we know, we know what our obligation is. So this is a little deep in that sense. If we're committed to the lease, what are the next steps and how do we fund that going forward? When we entered into those other agreements, we knew upfront what part of the obligation we owned and what part was being committed to by other groups and their donations are. Something similar to that.
In current, I don't need to interrupt, but could I make a suggestion? Maybe we should explain how E and D is funded each year because we don't necessarily have an endless supply of money. Quite frankly, it, you know, nobody has a crystal ball that's going to be in it in three years.
E and D is our excess and deficiency fund. That is similar to a town's free cash. So every year, when we're using that this year at the end of the year, that will be refilled to some capacity if we spent less than our budget. And it will receive revenues in excess of what we had budgeted for. Other than that, there, there are no other influences. So that's really just our, our savings account that will build up over time of revenues versus the expenditures that we've had. So last year, our E and D is certified at 1.296 million, and we committed $490,000 of that to next year's capital plan. That's where we are right now. So there's no other, we will be filling that up to capacity that perhaps we have in the past few years because we finished the withdrawal of the capital, that was a significant influx of revenue to us. That time is over and as our budgets get tighter and then as even our funding for this day gets tighter, this is less and less, it's refilling now at the end of the year. So we kind of true that, we can let this spend, try to manage that very conservative way.
But if I recall from having received some free cash articles at town meeting in the past, once that's obligated, you don't go back to town meeting and ask for the next portion of the next year, you just, you get to spend it. So in this case, because we're, you know, like so for instance, if you get a $10,000 item on free cash, you just, it doesn't matter if it takes you a couple of years to spend it, it's, it's obligated out of the free cash account, but this seems a little different.
Well, it's a little different than a town meeting because what happens is then they assign it to an article. So that article has a period of time. For us, it's usually the year we have committed to a capital plan for July 1 of 2018, January 30 of 2019. The expectation is that, that is what would complete the project.
Mike, Chris, Lauren, do you have any questions, comments you'd like to make?
Yeah, I'm curious, have we looked at anything else for this year as a solution such as renting those mobile lights for, I heard my page for two months in the fall? Have you researched anything about, so a mandate to keep some lights there? Have we not even gotten that file on yet?
Are you talking about the ones that are running generators and?
Yeah, you know, when we're using the highway, but if they make 50 foot tall ones that we could rent for 20 grand a season.
I'm talking about the safety aspect with the sporting events, with balls in the air and, and all kinds of things going on, it's a real safety risk to, there's a reason why the lighting is as costly as it is, the LED lighting. It's also warranted for 25 years, so you are getting maintenance, pretty much maintenance free lighting for 25 years. And it's developed in a way that it's putting light right on the field. I'm not an expert at the generated part of powered lights, but I do know Musco will rent lights for a season for $35,000. So, but to me, that's money that could go towards having permanent lights and having something for 50 years.
That does give us potential breathing room if we can't find this lease purchase proposal, though.
Yeah, if we have options from legislature and in a year to fundraise, a $20,000 to $30,000 mandate to not cancel anything, I think we need to explore with the committee, you know, for students. The second thing I've looked into is using the Rizzo Field in Kingston. The issue with using Rizzo in Kingston is somewhat a scheduling conflict. If we try and use the field on Friday night for football, that might be okay, but it would probably get a problem if they also have baseball or softball or soccer or something else going on, because it's still limited parking. But I, I talked to the recommission and it is very affordable to get that field, it's a matter of making an early request, I think, and seeing if we can get the whole complex to ourselves. But they have lights, they have bleachers, they have concessions. Concessions, they said we could have, they put them out another function there. Another function, then the other function. Yeah.
Laura?
Well, just to play off what Chris is saying, I think, you know, one of the things that's really hard here is we, we're looking at two options, kind of both. We don't like either of them because obviously the lease is a real challenge, but you know, hearing the passion here and seeing the, the needs of the community, you know, we want to help. And so, you know, I, I'm also wondering sort of what other options, you know, I would be much happier right now if I had a few different options to look at rather than, than these two options which, you know, we can't win either way. So, you know, I like some of the ideas that Chris has, but I, but obviously part of the reason this field's rushed is because it is rushed because if we want there to be lights for the fall, we'd have to start now. So I'm not saying, but I'm just sort of, you know, talking off the top of my head. You know, I do wonder about rentals. I actually have a bunch of questions that I wrote down because I've been thinking about this a lot. It was interesting, I was at Hingham High School recently for an event and they had the lights on, on the field, it was a night event. And I was walking by one of the lights and there's actually a sign on the lights and it says, "Lights are made possible by the such and such family." And so I texted Eric and I said, "We need them to move to Kingston." So I don't know, I don't know if we have that, you know, any of those families here in Kingston, but I, I do, you know, I do think that the money's going to have to come from somewhere other than the school budget because we don't have actual money in the school budget for this huge expense.
I guess I'll come to you, and that's just, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah. The one question I had, and because I've never leased anything, so I'm not familiar with, but if we, is there penalties for panning it off soon? with it, but if we, is there penalties for panning it off sooner? You know, if we, if we got into it, and then fundraising kicks off, the money's starting to roll in, we want to make an extra pan, two pans. Is this the only proposal that this company, is this company even here tonight, or is it?
No, they're not here. I, this was a lease proposal that Martha secured, and I don't know the answer to that if there is a penalty payoff earlier. Do you know, Martha?
I don't have that lease agreement right in Friday, it doesn't say anything to that. I can find out that information very quickly.
It's a good question. I mean, I don't believe there would be, but I don't know that for a fact.
Cool. So we don't know how much money has been raised so far? And the second question is, what happens to the money right now that comes in for your concessions and the concession sales?
So we can answer the question about the concession sales first.
Hi.
That funds the athletic people, I think.
No, the concession stands, the gridiron, and the ticket sales. Ticket sales funds the operation of Project Front Flex.
Revolve them, it's the revolve.
Yes, it's a source.
And the latest number I have on the fundraising, and if anybody in the audience has a more updated number, please feel free to chime in, was $2,700. Ed?
Two possible ways to do it already. If they're impossible, one's hairbrained, and one I know we want to go. I'll vote for one people on. Like first, is there any way of getting our schedule to sync with Pembroke's? Come up with some idea of sharing their field. I don't know, that might have some rip the stage with things for people. The second one, which is a hairbrained one, the state National Guard reserves portable equipment that we're talking about is out there and sits idle, probably in some cases, except all the time except like two or three days a year. Has anybody considered trying to approach Massachusetts or the National Guard Reserve to see if maybe one would hop up? They'd have none, might even get free. And that could be a stop, stop, yeah, a band-aid. Approach, I'll wait until the year of... I'll wait until the fall.
I would say by the first week in November, we are on that field regularly because I can only have practice.
Okay, and early in the spring? And I'm not just talking about the one time.
Our first game is the first week of September. Soccer probably starts around the same time.
Okay. Who uses it in the spring?
The spring time, there's a few lacrosse games on the abs, senior night, there's not as much in the spring.
Yeah, and that's, the thing is, we're talking about, since the time that the state or reserve, National Guard, we can meet it, and that's why I'm doing it. It's worth checking out. I don't have any contacts that would be going on to ask that, but it is something to think about. Like I said, they're both distasteful and hairbrained, but that's what we're looking for.
Oh, into ten.
I have an answer from Musco.
Go ahead.
It's not, that's not an issue to pay it off or soon enough.
So there's no cash?
No. So, can I just clarify one more thing? We don't currently use it in the spring because as part of, you have to understand the history of lacrosse coming into the school system. 10, 12 years ago, we've gone from having a one girls team and one boys team to now five and potentially six by next year, having about 125 students involved. There's such a pressure and push for them to be on our Syracuse field because of what Syracuse field is. It's a bowl, it's got spectator seating, it's, you know, the habbo lights. Everyone wants to be there, and that's typically what you see in most high schools in a varsity venue. You do see that we need to think about that in the future and that we would get more use down the road. So, you know, for me, I think in terms of growing, we're going to need more space in the spring. And I think that would make lacrosse people happy. They sometimes think I don't like them. It's not that, I just need grass to be in place come fall for the teams that use that field for fall. So I think that's, I think we could get greater use going forward.
Laura?
You know, in this, in thinking about this issue, I want to make sure that we're thinking about the big picture in terms of our facilities. So, you know, I know we've talked about, you know, the bits of mention of, well, we're not asking for a turf field, but, you know, is that something that we're, that we think about down the line? I know there's a lot of schools that have them, but I also know that a lot of them have them because they got them as part of the building project. So it's not something that the town paid for. I know that, I think in Kingham they did. But I guess I'm wondering if we decide to put new lights up, and then in five years or 10 years, you know, suddenly we're able to upgrade our facilities, is that, are we going to have to take that all down again? Like, I want to make sure that what we're thinking about fits into a long-term plan. And then my other question has to do with income from the athletic department. I know that Silver Lake does not, we do not rent out fields, obviously we don't rent out the football field because it's not turf, and that would be a lot of wear and tear, but baseball fields and things like that. It's not clear to me how much income that would bring to us if we were to lease our fields, but is that something that's been talked about in terms of some revenue coming from that, the sort of loss of the cost of this?
Our fields, as far as I know, I don't think it's changed. Our field's our field. Maybe, you know, rented. Rented for a day late.
That wasn't meant to go.
I think we have the interest, I don't think the outside is interested.
My, my understanding is that in general, we do not rent or lease our fields, mainly because the usage makes the dirt more compacted, the field's more compacted, which then becomes an issue of concussions. So we have so many teams and so many students playing so many games, that's part of why we rest Syracuse field in the fall.
Did that change, because at one time, Mark, that was the subject of Mark?
It's been sort of an ongoing discussion. I mean, we continue to look at it, but the concern is really the compacting of the fields. The more they're used, the more compacted they become.
I apologize.
Nope, no, it's something, you would love the money.
Yeah.
But there's a cost.
Well, we talked to you.
Yeah, I don't.
You know, where can we get more money, you know, on an ongoing basis? It might seem like a place we might want to.
I'm going to push this discussion into the debate phase. I would like to see the lights on the field for all of our students, our families, our communities next year. I do not feel comfortable being put into a position of having to make a $316,000 plus interest decision with not enough time to fully understand the implications. We have $100,000 allocated for this project. We were just made aware that we could rent the same exact lights, give us a year, to be further studied, for further fundraising, for further intervention from the State House and other parties for $35,000. So I would make a motion to accept the $35,000 rental. Again, we can have discussion, you can vote your heart, but that's my...
The only thing I would caution is that you, we would not be able to have our night lacrosse games in the spring. Therefore, they'll not like us anymore. This is first season, so you'd get it for the fall for $35,000 if you did another season. Just, just want to make sure you understand.
So you're talking basically seven for the year.
Precisely.
I think we, that's good information to have. If we're discussing potentially having the same exact company come in and put in the permanent lights, we might have some leverage with them as well to maybe leave the lights or let us borrow them for a few games. I just want to put it out there on the table so we can start moving towards yes or no for them.
So the $35,000, are they going to put up? They're not going to install permanent destruction for $35,000, correct? So they're going to bring in rental lights that we're already talking about, right?
Mr. Creed, I have a concern about if we did choose this route, how would we be able to fund that? Because at the lease, we may not be able to fund that through our capital plan, E and D, if we have a non-operating budget.
That's a lot.
So back over.
So, if we did that, would we be requesting a bustle?
We'll have to make the question.
So, if we want to move into the debate, debate phase, I guess, you know, I didn't...
What we're going to do is basically what I'd like to see.
I mean, you know, I'm looking at all the numbers that you all have given us, or me to pour over, you know, and it's impressive, obviously, the amount of work that goes into figuring out how to run this whole city of ours, our school city. It, it makes me really nervous to sign a lease. It's not because I don't want to solve the problem to do, certainly. I think these kids deserve a solution to this issue. It's more of a want in some respects, but I think that if we can figure out a way to solve the problem over the short term, we can probably figure out a way to solve the problem over the long term. And I just kind of feel right now that I don't think I want enough options in front of us to make a decision. Like, you know, the renting thing likely may not qualify as a capital cost. I mean, you could call it a phased capital plan piece, but, you know, whether it's Rizzo or whether it's Pembroke or whether it's, I don't know. Like, I think we can figure out a way to have some lights this fall for these kids somewhere locally and make this work. But I feel like sitting here right now, the only option we have in front of us is to lease, and that's just not enough options for me to make a decision. So I would recommend that we ask our athletic director or whoever is the appropriate person to flesh out a series of options for us to consider that would solve certain criteria, which would be make sure these kids have lights in the fall and lights in the spring somewhere locally, that doesn't cause a lot of other transportation and other issues. And then figure out ways that we can actually phase in, purchase it, the lights that don't commit us to a lease situation that we don't even know if we can fund, because I am personally not willing to fund it out of an operating budget if the E and D doesn't get approved. So, I don't know, I just kind of feel like I don't have options in front of me right now to make this kind of decision without. But saying that, I'm committed to figuring out how to get these kids lights for their games. It just may not be the perfect situation, like a brand new four, four lights for $317,000 this fall.
I agree with that. I think, I think we got to look at rentals, either a local company like Musco that maybe has them in Massachusetts we can get, maybe National Guard, maybe the highway department, state, maybe Benny can help us. I don't think going to another, nearing towns, the end of the world, if it's that or no night lights, then that would be a different decision, but I think, you know, Rizzo, I think is very affordable. It's just a matter of getting to them soon with the requests.
Can I speak to the Rizzo thing because I've already spoken to the rec department?
Sure.
They, for the same reasons as superintendent said, will not allow us to use it. When this all hit us and we were looking at every avenue possible to provide these seniors with their last year under the lights, we went to the rec department. We were willing to pay the fees, we were willing to cut them in on the ticket sales. They will not do it because of the damage that it will do to the field, the impact that it has on the concussion testing that these kids go through, and because they have other things that are already scheduled in that meet their guidelines, they won't do it. We've already asked them.
I had the conversation just this week again, that wasn't a no. So, we were getting different answers from people. I was talking to Sue at the rec, she said they brought up the last meeting last Tuesday I think it was, for the rec commission in Kingston. They were open to it, but there were concerns, parking and being one of the big ones, and confusion about the events. But the wise, I thought it was very reasonable to say bad or not.
I agree, but they flat out told us no.
When was that, in the spring?
It was as soon as we found out about the lights, because that was the best option because it was in Kingston and it was feasible to the field that they play on now and, but they told us because of all of these different rules with the levels of dirt and the grind on the field and the parking, the capacity and everything, that it would be, they would not be able to do it.
I can pull back a minute. Pull back a minute.
Mr. Chairman, since you've allowed your other audiences to come back and the game, I would give you a practical political question. And I know a little bit of our politics. Tonight, you've got a crowd here, and it's good, and I participate, applaud the participation. But next fall, next spring, if Joy has to go, the superintendent has to go before these three towns because she needs added personnel, you're going to hear football lights that you've never heard before. You had a choice, and you chose football lights. And that's going to be hard for you, and I tell you honestly, to build an operation budget unless you're at town meeting, as Ed said, and Paula. 117 people were there when we voted the Silver Lake budget and the elementary budget, and both had motions on the floor to reduce, and football wasn't even on the game. So they vote whatever they want to vote. I know, tough votes, but sooner or later you got to vote. But if you get it, remember that date and call your town meeting, find out when they're going to meet in the spring, because they're going to need you big time.
Mr. Creed, it's the town meeting and the town voting, it's the same handful of people that make all the decisions in our town meeting.
In the town of Kingston, the town budget was $47 million, decided by 117 people.
So, ladies and gentlemen, members of the committee, unless we have some new information, new questions to ask, I'd be delighted to like a motion or I'd like to...
No question. I just have one question with school committees, if I'm second, I can eat to acknowledge.
Okay. Committee members first, unless you yield out your...
I can go ahead, thank you. I was just wondering if the school committee would consider giving us, in other words, if we were able to come up with more options, and I, I hear you and I agree with you, if you would call another meeting, not wait another month and look at the timeframe, if there's a way that you would be willing to come back together if we would be able to bring additional options? And the only reason I say this, and not that I have the answer, but I'm in the construction world, that's what I do for my normal life, in the concrete world, but I'm just trying to see if there's a way with the monies you have, plus other things, other commitments, and if we can bring you different options that may make sense, and then I think, you may feel covered. You may also say, two weeks from now, say, you know, all those options stink, Ollie, they don't make sense. But I'm just asking if you would give us the two weeks, because then if you come up additional options that made some sense, and, and I'm committing from me personally, I will look into it, and I'll help Martha, but I will look into the issues with the lighting, the issues with the construction end of it, and all the resources I have, to try to come up with additional options for you that may make some sense. And maybe at the end, none of them make any sense, and that's okay, but I'm just asking for the two weeks. If we added two weeks, that you would really come together again to at least consider additional now that I know more about this, you know, I hear everything, I know the money that's been allotted. Mr. Creed is very right about being able to spend on the, on the rentals. Perhaps there's issues we can get around with the rentals, having someone donate, I don't know. But if you would at least not make us wait another month before another meeting, if you can come together in two weeks, even whatever, then we would bring additional options to you. I'm just asking if there's a possibility.
So, I wanted to know how long it would take the school administration to come up with some of the options presented to us, and then find out if there's another way of having lights this fall.
I would have to pass it to our athletic director to see what kind of options they could come up with. I really don't have the expertise in the field of football lights, so I'm not saying she does, but certainly she's heads and shoulders above I am. So, you know, if Martha feels there are other options, again, what we have is a subcommittee called Safety Facility Fees, that's normally where this goes. That committee, when we reorganize, isn't major, but we have some members from before that could come in. You know, we could try to hold a meeting... You know, we could try to hold a meeting if the committee was, the subcommittee was so interested, and if people wanted to come in with some options, and then maybe we could bring them forward to the full committee if not, we have our regular committee scheduled. That would be an option of doing it.
One, one other question I had, uh, was how long does it take from the OK to the installation process? And, you know, what's the time period from ROA to them installing?
It's a six-week lead time. However, in the summer, a lot of people, they have a lot of projects, so their schedule starts getting booked. So it's a different, it's a tough time. So I'm not sure that six weeks is not longer than that, you know, because of their scheduling right now.
So, so if we wait a month, then we could possibly have to reorganize some games, possibly still get majority of the games from our own.
If I may, I don't believe we actually use the lights till around November. Am I correct on that?
We use them right on.
Yeah, the first day.
We play games at night. I just want to make sure that people understand it's a circle field, it's a stadium, it's not the football lights. It's, it's our student, students' lights. So many different groups are on there. These young men have waited all this time, and I give them so much credit for that. So, as a, as an answer to the two-week window, I would really like to involve our facility director in that as well, and, you know, could use some support there in terms of kind of getting a plan together to do that. And we would appreciate the time to be able to give you more options.
So I have one comment and one question. I do have a bearsil lacrosse parent who does have expertise in this area and has offered to, to support some options. I think he's called Martha, so.
Yeah, we talked a little bit about.
Yeah, so that might be helpful. And then the other option I have is more of a business question. So, we, we couldn't, we need some bids, right? I mean, we can't, this, this be a sole source. I mean, wouldn't we have to go out and actually find other suppliers?
I was just mentioned they're obviously good, so that.
But I mean, there may be other options that are cheaper or other suppliers, right?
I believe you had looked into other opportunities.
So, so I think that all the details is the install. So if we have a hundred and eighty to buy the lights outright, I think then this is the, these are the type of communities that I think would rally around installation and in-kind, and you can get that install number down. And we can look at that also, and we could also look at leasing the lights themselves from Musco, just the lights, not the install piece. So there are, there are a number of different options, but I was working around a hundred thousand, which doesn't get us the procurement, the state bid number.
I like the idea of having a couple of weeks to come up with options to send to the soon-to-be reorganized committee and then to come back with options for our next meeting. That would include not only purchasing, but also other options for making sure these kids have lights in the fall and the spring.
So, if I could just get an indication of how many of the committee members would be able to make it back on the twenty eighth. That, that's what we're suggesting, we just want to see if you're actually available. This is Thursday.
Jason, I think this is serious enough. I know it's partly just for some people, but I think this is serious enough to turn it down and save the ball. Get your butts in. Just get in.
Will you ask for the twenty eighth?
Could you be here on the twenty eighth? Mike?
Yes.
All right, so I rescind my motion, nobody ever saw me. I entertain a motion to table this discussion. Any further research on the part of our athletic director for us to reconvene on June twenty eighth at six o'clock for the sole purpose of discussion of the lights for Silver Lake? So moved.
I'm gonna.
So moved.
I'm not second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just think we should stick with our regular schedule. I think that it's going to take two weeks of new information. I think we're going to digest that information, I think we have questions about that information, and I, I don't think, I think we should stick with our regular schedule.
On this matter of table?
Could, could we decide that we're going to come back and talk about the ideas, but not a decision?
Well, we could always come back and table it again, but we could also make some movement if we all feel comfortable at that time.
If there are options.
You, you could vote your mind at this point on how you want to handle meeting on the twenty eighth of June. All right, all those in favor, meeting on the twenty eighth of June at six o'clock. All those against? Abstentions. Very much. All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for your time tonight. That concludes our discussion.
I just want to say, Jason, unfortunately, I'll be, I have a wedding, I'm just getting married.
We can have a dice call?
Not that you can't have here, but sometimes the.
Jim, I didn't even mean to imply that you were obligated to.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry.
I meant to say the same.
You're more than welcome to be here.
Thank you. Motion for a brief recess is.
I will second that.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Guys, we have quite a docket left. We've got people waiting for us five minutes. And I would accept a motion to take our school district business out of order for our treasurer appointment discussion.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. All those in favor? Guys, session, all right.
Just so I can finish this.
We're all set? Once we received approval from the school committee to approve the position of pot-time treasurer in our budget, we have been looking for a model to pursue to see what works best for us. And at eight, six to ten hours per month, there have been some limitations. The position was posted as school, school spring, and we did use new resumes. Resumes were reviewed by superintendent, the school copy, the treasurer, and myself, in form of treasurer. Candidate David Leary has risen to the top of the pile. David is currently a pot-time treasurer with the Hanson Regional School District, as well as a local emergency communication center. David's background and current experience into the role that we're looking to develop, we have to say that's a work in process, but we're going to find the best model that works for us. The judiciary folks, the school committee, and I are looking for a vote of the school committee to appoint David Leary as the pot-time treasurer of the Silver Lake Regional Schools. David has joined us this evening. He's in waiting.
And close in your package is also David's resume that he sent in. And to be quite honest with you, when I saw that he worked at Woodman Hanson and knowing Dr. Ruth, their outgoing superintendent, the type of operation she runs over there, I knew David had to be top-notch, and when we interviewed him, he definitely impressed him. He brought a lot more to the table than I could have even hoped for. So, ladies and gentlemen of the committee, I'd like to introduce you to Mr. David Leary. David, if you'd like to say a few words to the committee?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. I hope you guys are, and I'm looking forward to it.
So one of the, the things that really gathered my attention to David was when Woodman Hanson hired him on as their treasurer, they went through the same reorganization. They went from a committee member that got trained in the yard to hiring David. And he's done some really innovative and creative things with their checks and balances, but also how he manages the money for them. Some things I'm excited about, don't want to get into too much, but I would entertain a motion to accept David Leary as our new treasurer for Silver Lake Regional Schools. Still moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions, or discussion from you?
Yes, because I'm the assistant as of right this moment. Where's the word? We, Jason and I felt that we were at a rather dangerous situation. Will I still be in the financial, uh, how would you say?
You'll still have to be bonded?
Yeah, fine.
There will be still some implications.
Point is, if something, if money turned up missing, it sounded like me and Jason last year could have bonded very easily.
If it wasn't for the great practices that we currently have.
Yeah. Sorry, Chrissy, I didn't mean it was you. Will I still have that light leaning in your arm? If anybody does have it, will they still have that?
You know, if one of you don't steal it.
I haven't attempted to.
I mean, people have that concern about, I mean, it sounds impossible, as long as nothing happens.
Yeah. Right.
I love an office, no.
Okay. Something we really needed to have some reassurance on, nothing personal, because I believe Jason and I.
Well, we were afraid of doing it to our own team.
Yes, that's true.
Having David in house.
Well, nothing personal. There are a few people I don't trust around here.
I'll point them out.
No, there's no reason to.
Any other questions or comments? Questions or comments? All those in favor of David's appointment to be the treasurer of Silver Lake Regional Schools, say aye.
Aye.
Against, opposed, unanimous. Thank you, David. So I am going to ask yet again to take an item out of order from the superintendent's report, and this would be the cafeteria update presentation.
So, I think you remember last month we talked about that our food service director retired, submitted his retirement papers, and we opened up on school spring a posting for a food service director, but we also wanted to simultaneously look at what a food service program would have to offer. I contacted Chartwells and I met with Matt Tenza, who is our regional, um, thank you, regional sales manager, I'm sorry, completely forgot what your title was. And we had a lovely meeting. Mr. De Peel joined us and Mike Banbury, who is from Kingston, Christine, and Melanier accountant. So, we asked them to come just so you could see what a food service program would have to offer. We have also completed our interviews of individuals for food service directors, and we did have some excellent candidates. So, at this point, we just wanted to see what both of our options would be.
We have a. Take you back for you guys.
Thank you.
Is that dinner?
Yeah, hopefully that's. Still, it was very, it's been a very complicated.
I think you have time this time, Leslie, and I'll shut the light off.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing us to take a bit of your time tonight. I feel like I should do like a little dance or something because we've been sitting for so long. My name is Lauren Rumpa. I'm the vice president of sales for the Northeast region for Chartwells K-12. And as Joy shared with me tonight, it's Matt Tenza, the regional sales director. And also with me is Erin Long. She's a district manager for us, supporting Massachusetts. And again, tonight, we're here to give you just a brief snapshot of what we do as partners with districts across the United States. How many of you have heard of Charles before? And just briefly, what, what have you heard? What do you know about contract food service partnerships? Very little? Well, Charles is part of a larger organization called Compass Group. We are one of twenty-eight sectors that serves a variety of demographics, a variety of different business lines, but Charles serves specifically public education. So we serve students, we serve faculty, we serve communities, all in public education. We are grateful to have partnerships with over forty schools in the state of Massachusetts alone, so Erin is super busy all the time. And we have similar partnerships actually across the United States, which is pretty profound, and again, very grateful to have those partnerships. Our organization believes very strongly in customizing our partnership plans based on the individual districts we serve, based on the individual demographics. So that means that we walk into a school, we learn from the key stakeholders of that school, what's important to them, what outcomes they're looking to drive, what their long-term goals are, what their short-term goals are, and we customize a dining services program based on those initiatives and based on the demographic of that specific student group. So what we do in Massachusetts is going to be much different than maybe what a menu looks like in Arizona. So we really believe wholeheartedly in that customization. And the, the common denominator, though, in all of our partnerships is really a passion and a commitment to nutrition and wellness, and putting really delicious food on the plate for the kids that we serve. As far as how we go about that, we use a proprietary process under Compass Group and under Chartwells that allows us to have those conversations with the key stakeholders and really glean that information out. And after we have those conversations, we build a customized partnership that really focuses on a lot of key areas like quality of food, like participation, like financial stability of a school district. Regulatory compliance is another area that we are huge supporters of for our school districts. And we take that information and we couple it with specialized resources, with culinary commitment, with nutrition and innovation, and that's really how we bring it to life in every district that we serve. So I'm going to pass the torch off to Erin. I'll have you go to the next slide if you could. And she's going to talk about really the cornerstone to bringing those programs to life, and that's our people.
So thank you again, everyone. I know you had a long evening, so I'll keep my comments consistent and brief. So in Massachusetts alone, as Lauren mentioned, we have forty or so school districts that we partner with. And our regional office is actually in Rangers, so it's pretty close geographically to Silver Lake. We are fortunate, too, and I spend a lot of time in this area, because we have about six or seven accounts or partners on the South Shore. We have Rockland, Duckberry, Brockton, Massachusetts. We have, um, I'm drunk. So I'm tired now. So Duckberry Wayne, Bristol Plymouth Tech High School, we have Lawrence. We have a lot of concentration of partnerships in this geographic area. And what does that mean to you? It means that we have a high concentration of support and resources in this area as well. As a regional manager, I'm one of three district managers that kind of cover Massachusetts, so I'm frequently in this, in this area myself. We have a support team, we have a regional chef, a marketing manager, and a team of support that goes into the actual schools and supports the food service director onsite, as well as the staff with training and support for the business models and administration. So we've been successful with cultivating a good network of highly skilled people just in this area. So for that, when you have turnover, like the food service director retires or move onto another opportunity, we look at that as a possibility for growth for our team. So we have a good concentration of folks that we can lean on for that kind of stuff. We predict that's right. And I know that sometimes when school districts are wrestling with the thought of either keeping their program in-house or moving it possibly to be outsourced, one of the biggest concerns on the employee's plate, the proverbial plate, is the current staff, the employees. And there's a myth out there that employees lose their jobs or the management company comes in, and that can't be further from the truth, contrary to what a lot of people think. We need the employees, the hourly staff in schools. They're on the front line, they know kids, they know their staff, they know their school buildings. So whether or not you decide if you wanted to put out an RFP to keep your employees on your payroll or potentially outsource them to the company, we usually have offered tonight in the ninety. tonight, in the ninety-five percent of the staff, would usually come on our payroll if you decide to go that route. So the accounts that I work in with in Massachusetts, about forty percent of them, we have the hourly staff on our payroll, the other sixty percent would stay on the school district payroll. So transitions are a little easier. So that's just something to keep in mind, that a lot of people think that they're going to lose their jobs and they're going to pan it through, and it couldn't be further from the truth. So some of the other programs that we saw there are just some recognition programs that we do with the staff. So whether or not the hourly staff work for the school district or for Chartwell's, we engage them and we treat them as if they're part of our team. So we have a lot of business excellence type of recognition programs. And we have a Be a Star program where we recognize a salary associate of the year, hourly associate. And just today, we chose some people in the state, and the folks that actually were nominated were, and won the recognition, were actually district employees.
Stay right there. Uh, so, first off, just let me thank you for being a re- we're all going to thank you. I actually sit on that side of my table, so I know what you're going through. So, relative to culinary commitment, Chartwell's is a food company. And I say it that way because there's a lot of companies out there that are, that manage the food service, but we keep food forefront. And we do that for a couple reasons. First and foremost is our company, Chartwell, we encompass through our parent company, our passion about food service and product. So we believe that if you provide good, healthy food to your students, that you will have happier students in the classroom, more productive students in the classroom. And if we are providing those, that good food to them, we increase participation. Increased participation leads to a successful program, not only from a reception point of view, from the students themselves and the staff, but also from a management point of view, which I get it, it's very challenging right now in education. So, we use a lot of different things to do that. One of the things that we absolutely do is all of our, all of our places do scratch cooking, so we are cooking right in the, right in the schools themselves. We're big, big fans of authentic flavors, so if it's Mexican, it's authentic Mexican. If it's local recipes here in this region, we use, we use that. So I was joking with Lauren on the way up. We're heading to Cranberry, the Cranberry region, right? So that would most likely be something that shows up in our recipes at some point. But again, it's, it's really about providing that really good food. Think about why you buy food. The pricing is when you get those really fantastic aliments coming out of a, a place that's producing the food, it just draws you in. And that's, that's why we keep food first, so. And we have a lot of innovative programs that help us do that, that help us engage the students and also get information to our parents and staff. I'm going to let Erin and Lauren talk about those programs a little bit.
So Nutrisite is an innovative and proprietary software program that we have partnered with this company, Nutrisite. And all the accounts for the districts that we work in have this program. It's a menu-based program, so it's an app on your phone, where you can go on the district website and click the link to the school menus, and Nutrisite will pop up. And the benefit of it is it's in real time. You can scroll or hover over the menu item, you see a photo of what the menu item looks like in school, you see allergen information, carbohydrate information. So the school nurses love it because, as you know, with allergies, diabetes and all that, it's like a turnkey program for them to use in the schools. The parents really love it, which has been a really great change for us and our family as well. And it's in the end, I don't know.
Joy, that link that I sent with the menus, that actually tied to the Nutrisite program, if you had a chance to look or I may do.
And then the, we have two recent innovations that are extremely exciting. And Matt can actually send you a link to some videos that really articulate both the Teaching Kitchen and Student Choice very well. The Teaching Kitchen was born out of a relationship with the Culinary Institute of America. And what drove that innovation was to help educate not only the students, but the community about nutrition and wellness and what needs to be healthy. So it's actually a shipping container that travels across the country, and it unfolds, and inside pops out a chef or a dietitian. And we have kids come up and their community come up, and they teach them a recipe. And the kids go up there and they're making white bean chicken tacos, and they're getting engaged. It's really kind of like our very own Food Network show that travels across the country. And we did some surveys with the kids after they did the Teaching Kitchen, and the percentage of kids that identified the level of confidence that really increased with cooking was profound, as well as kids who said that they would actually try things they hadn't tried before, like quinoa, like vulgar, like the things that, you know, we all maybe mispronounced a time or two. So, that's the Teaching Kitchen. The second thing, which is our latest innovation, hot off the press, is something called Student Choice. I had mentioned earlier, we have about twenty-eight operating sectors under Compass Group. Our sister sector in higher education culture at Chartwell's Higher Ed, this innovation came from them. Student Choice is really a way to get the kids engaged in what actually shows up on the menu, so their voice is heard and they see it on the menus. The premise is, it's a pop-up station that would happen in your cafeterias. That station would have a couple of menu items on it. If it's tasted, they vote. Whichever item gets the highest vote is then featured on the menu. So, we've heard rave reviews, kids love it. And again, I mean, who doesn't want to be a part of what she gets to eat every day? So, those are two innovations we're extremely excited about that we're bringing to schools.
So, we promise we keep it short. Sitting on my, your side of the table, I can say that you have very difficult decisions in front of you, you're kind of at a crossroad, right? Do you hire a dining and service manager, continue to do what you do? Or do you make that bold step of, let's really dive in deep with your management company and see what they can do for us? It's a decision that shouldn't be taken lightly. And it's one that shouldn't be done until you vet all of your options. And listening to you talk about the lights, I can tell that you are absolutely a group that wants to make sure you have all the information that I have brought you in there. So, we're here to help. We're, we're happy to educate, we're happy to work with you, provide you with information. And there's just a few things just to keep in mind as you kind of go down this road, and I know you have to make decisions pretty quickly, is you have to keep in mind what the politics are. So what, how are your, how are your communities going to receive the fact that you're considering going to an outsource model? And there's going to be resistance to that, right? The people who work here live in the community, as we've already heard, they'll still live in the community. It just depends on where you decide that we want their paycheck to come from. You have to decide, you know, be prepared for the employee resistance, right? I know that in my town, when we entertained this concept, I had all the food service leaders, very next to me, were all in front of me, ready to talk about why we shouldn't do it. And it just takes for a long time. And, and then, you know, just know what the process is, right? So the process can be, it can be long and it can be in detail, right? There's an RFP process, and there's a D process, and then you have to be able to roll it all out. So, you're not restricted by the timeline of it, other than the fact that you may make a commitment to a dining service manager at this point. So, really, again, we're here to help, happy to meet with you and, or consult with you, however you would like to look at it. We hope that you would choose to become Chartwell's partners, but we understand you have a very, you know, difficult decision that you have to put in front of you and what your options are. With that, is, we're going to let you have, you know, open this up for questions. And we're here, we'll hear as long, see, answer as many as you want, but I know you have a really long agenda, so. With that said, for any questions for Matt, Lauren, or Erin? Go ahead.
Um, so, I have a lot of questions that other people probably asked the same thing, but, um, do you guys, do you provide the services at Zavari High School by any chance?
No.
No, okay. So the other thing is, overall, would like the serving sizes be the same as what we have here? I ask because I have a sixteen-year-old and fifteen-year-old football player, boys that weigh combined five hundred and seventy pounds, and they eat like a quarter of their weight a day.
Well, the portions across all school lunch programs are highly regulated in terms of USDA oversees school lunch programs to the national school lunch program. And most districts, if they're abiding by the rules, you have to measure out the portions. And one of the reasons for that particularly to be consistent is because of things like Nutrisite's being so transparent, that if we're putting flour and fat and sodium and all those other things on the website, we have to make sure we're following the recipes and providing the adequate proportions. That's not to say that we can't offer secondary food items all apart for those growing football players versus those of the smaller kids in elementary school that may not need that extra stuff.
Got it.
At a high level, can you explain to me what it is we would be outsourcing? You're saying we could keep our staff on payroll. You said something about cooking in school, scratch cooking, or what is it that you would come in and do for us on a daily basis? What are we outsourcing?
Sure, so that's a valid, great question. I'm glad you asked it. We customize our partnerships across the country based on the district. By that, I mean, some districts, we provide a director, a chef on Chartwell's payroll, and the hourly staff would remain on the district payroll. That's kind of one scenario, right? In that partnership option, we are bringing technology, innovation, regulatory compliance, menus, and the support of our great region teams to help impact the dining program. So, Matt used the word consultant, which is a great word. So we're really, you know, taking a consultative approach with an onsite team and a region team to help your initiatives in dining. Another option that happens across the country, and I know in Erin's region, it's about sixty percent, or is it the forty?
Well, for all the districts I oversee, about sixty percent of them have employees, the hourly staff are on the district payroll, the town payroll. The other forty percent have come onto our payroll based on the RFP and what was requested in the RFP for us to manage the staff and take them on our payroll. So it's the same, we do the same exact thing. If I have a food service director in a school district, they're running and managing the program, they're training the staff, they're providing, they're meeting with the students and the parents and everything, and they're just creating a great program.
When you say they're managing the program, are they buying the product, sourcing the product? I mean, that's okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
Buying the food, processing payroll either with the payroll person in the district or through our own payroll program with Chartwell's. And then we provide an invoice at the end of the month with backup information to the school district of everything that's been purchased for the month. So we focus on food, because you guys have bigger fish to fry with education and football lights, and so we take that headache away from school districts by coming in and doing what we do.
Anything, would?
Okay, I got several. Saying, you know, get rid of the staff, but if we have the staff go on your payroll, do you need, what's the pay rate that you go into?
It varies. It depends on, I mean, we have our kind of industry standard rates, but it all depends on the objectives and what's lined up and the criteria of the RFP and what you're looking for as, as a district.
To be honest, that would be a major issue.
Right.
You take care of the accounting of the food accounts, that the actual kids are, like, paying their money? Yes?
We manage the POS system, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, yeah, okay. We've got kids that are on food assistance programs. And in other situations, kids' account was emptied, what are you going to do? This is a serious thing, because it's happening, we have news where the kids have been bounced with food that's been taken away.
Yes, hot button.
Yeah, that's a hot button with me. Oh, yeah. So, how is that going to get you?
That's really, the districts set charge policies or humanitarian meal policies, and we implement them. We certainly have a lot of examples of good policies throughout state and things that work and things that don't. We consult with you to see what is going to- I have some school districts that still believe in alternative lunch, and others that are like, no, we're not going down that road at all anymore. I have a lot of examples and samples.
So, all right, next one, I'm going to go a little fast. New hires, who handles that? Us or you?
Again, it depends on whether or not they're on the school district payroll and there's an HR person that, that goes through, or they're not payroll. It's usually a joint effort, even when it's on the school district payroll.
So, if you have a union, you're going to have to deal with the union's rules.
Right.
Okay.
And in most of the accounts with school district staff, we have, it's all of them.
Now, we, thank God, don't have this one, but a lot of city school systems in particular, it's not new debt, four meals a day, breakfast, lunch, and dinner. You've advocated what we've learned?
Yeah, we do it in Brockton.
Oh, thank you. There we go. I wasn't aware that you were the ones that did that.
Yeah.
The staff in the school. Is there any discount you can give the, the staff? Like, you know, that would be a first matter to me, maybe mine, you know, if the teachers and, if they have a reduced lunch, right off the bat.
I have, you know, I've never been asked that question before. I know we usually have an adult meal price that is set, and there's definitely regulatory items that go along with even setting the adult prices in terms of the price point you have to be at. I think we, it might be a way for the district to subsidize the difference of what you're reducing it by, but I don't think the state and USDA would allow just the program to, you know, absorb that.
Okay. Last one, this is kind of funny, but quite seriously, compare your food to military food from twenty years ago. It's better.
Oh, of course.
Yeah, I think you should share your data.
Yeah. We have, like, we have such a concentration of partnerships in the South Shore, and all of them have had increased participation over the last several years. Introduce new programs such as breakfast, breakfast in the classroom. Rockland Public School started a summer program three years ago at one site. Last year went to three sites, discounted somewhere up to five. Carts, mobile points of service, so financial stability, increasing participation, good training programs for the staff and menus of the kids. You got to make the food meet the regulations, but you also have to make it taste good for the kids. So if it's all healthy and they don't eat it, then it's a waste.
A shovel bomb.
Yeah.
Right. Good retention, but didn't-
Right. And I think it is important to mention, and Matt alluded to it earlier, one of the things that is uniquely different about Chartwell's as an organization is our approach to food through the chefs that we employ, who, you know, do recipe development, who try new skill sets, and who help keep the menus innovative and nutritious. And that's just a big differentiator, and you see on the plate every day.
Corey, thank you very much, I appreciate you acknowledging your questions.
Is this something that we're looking to, to roll out to the whole union, and this will be a union thirty-one vote? Or just-
Halifax has its own food service director and food service program. So this would only impact how, sub like Kingston and Dennehy.
So, do you have any, we have a career tech ed program here, which you've heard a little bit about tonight, obviously we have culinary program. So do you ever partner with schools in that respect? And can you just tell me a tiny bit about that?
Yeah. It's funny, because I'm like, oh, my town's an opportunity.
We should put that back there.
Yeah. Um, one of the benefits that may not be obvious is because Compass Group is such a big, huge, global purchasing behemoth, we get very good pricing on food. And we have, in many districts that have culinary arts program, work with the culinary arts director or teacher to purchase the food out of savings for the program. So that's one way we've done it. We, I was a food service director myself in Alabot for eleven years, and we had a culinary arts program next door, and I worked with the two instructors to do training of my staff. And then we would actually purchase some items that the culinary arts students made to serve in the, our program. So there's a lot of reciprocity that goes on when we can form those partnerships, and there's a lot of different examples of, we're actually at Bristol Plymouth Tech, and there's a culinary arts program there, and we do a lot of those, kids and the director, too. Lot of opportunity.
Any other questions? Mike?
Um, what is, what is the typical meal cost? Is there, like, when they, when they purchase it, is it, is it, how much is it?
Oh, the price of your current lunches? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, well, you, Joy, you just said it's going to the den if we-
It would, they would run Bennett if, if the vote, if that's the route, we decided to go. You know, again, this is sort of information. At this point, the lunch prices would stay- At this point, the lunch prices would stay the same. That's part of the lunch equity tool.
Now, what about, now with Dennis, do we, we don't even cook food again, do we? Did I remember right?
Not for scratch.
Okay. I mean, we did at one time, didn't we?
Yeah.
Do we have the soda, does that?
Not so much.
Didn't make some.
So in a situation like that.
Would be like whole.
Food become noble, right? So if we prepare someplace else.
Or if the district includes in their RFP, they need the capital funding, but you have to include in the RFP, we can respond to it by funding amortized over the length of the contract. So if you had a big capital need, obviously a five-year authorization schedule works better than three, but that's also an option where we've done that and I'd say ninety percent of the accounts that we are in, we've got small equipment, small equipment to serve in lines up to.
Full kitchens.
Yeah.
Just a question for Joyce. What's our timeline? So we're looking, we're being going for the number? So we're on a tighter timeframe to getting our P out to get back and figure out some of these costs for capital or whatever men want to do to build this program?
So my understanding is that we have to serve food for students on August twenty ninth when they sort of show up. So that is sort of a real time.
That's, okay.
And again, you know, this was really information.
Yeah.
You know, I believe that the committee is not responsible or directly responsible for hiring a food service director. I'm trying to bring forward options to you so you could see some of the things we're weighing. You know, it's not, like, we wouldn't bring the school committee in as we were interviewing food service directors, but if we were to go with a large scale change, such as Chartwell's, to their point, there probably would be a tremendous amount of pushback, at least on some level, from some of the staff and possibly some of the community because many of our staff live in a community. So, you know, if we were to go down this route, they have great reputations and it works incredibly well in some communities and I've called all my local colleagues. And then there are some, some many communities where Chartwell's was in and they decided to go back to a food service director because it worked better for them. My belief is that it's all about fit and I honestly don't know what will be the best fit. I'm sort of seeking information. I'm sharing with you on real time. Matt was kind enough, he met with us an hour and a half, maybe, you know, came and met. We're really in a time crunch.
Yeah.
So I just wanted you to see what the options are that we're looking at. You know, we did a plot post on school spring, I think we had about thirty applicants, did six to eight interviews, I don't remember the exact number, six interviews, they're all starting to merge together now. And we have some strong candidates. So, you know, again, I just wanted to see what Chartwell's had to offer. There's other food service programs. To be honest with you, I just contacted Chartwell's, they have a good reputation. So, you know, and, and they're local, you know, I knew some of the surrounding communities that they're in.
Is it cost neutral since we already put our budget together for this next four months?
That's, that's a great question. You know, we have only done some initial talks. You know, one of my concerns is if Chartwell's comes in, if they're unable to make the program in the black, if the program goes in the red, you know, would that contract mean that the school committee would be responsible as we were in the past when we discovered the quarter million deficit? Or is that part of the contract? I mean, I think there's a lot of different ways things could be written, if I understand that correctly.
Sure. And I would just say we are in a position to do a preliminary analysis for you to help you understand what it would look like to be in a partnership with a company like Chartwell's. Because certainly, I had an old client of mine many years ago who used to say to me, no margin, no mission. That's what he used to say. And so we know that we are in the service business and we know that we have to put nutritious food on the plate that the kids will eat, but we also know that we have to be good stewards for our partners and we know that we need to make them financially stable. So we balance those two things and we appreciate that that's super important. So we can do a preliminary analysis just to give you an idea of what it would look like. We're happy to do that.
Do you have any long-term data based on schools you went into about the participation rates of students once they see your product? You speak to that at all? I know you're putting me on the spot, you can, speaking generalities, I know that might bother the same person, but just to give us an idea.
Well, actually, as part of the RFPs that typically issued in Massachusetts and for food service RFP, the state standard RFP, but they have in other states, either in Lincoln, Connecticut, what I don't have, a standard state RFP, so it's very turnkey. Massachusetts is a little different in the sense that the business offices and superintendents usually talk to each other and get models of RFPs and then put their own together that suits their needs. There's criteria in those RFPs and I've seen on ninety-nine percent of them asks the companies to kind of illustrate where you've had success with increasing participation and holding it over the last three years, five years, and every single response, we've been able to show that.
Every single response?
Well, because we have examples of like districts. So Silver Lake said, you have other districts in a similar size and demographic where you've strongly increased in participation. We have to pull data from our local Massachusetts accounts that would fit that and the answer we should have presented with that.
In your interview, you concerned that factors would seem somewhat concurrent. What is concurrent? How would you, and I think this is a great option to explore, I really do, especially to get the analysis. How do you think successful would you be to hire a food service director if you said, hey, we're considering this and, you know, in three months or six months or next August or a year from now, we run up, go down this route? I mean, I mean, I think you'd have to be somewhat open and honest with whoever you hire. And I hope people are going to have analysis done for decision making by August, obviously. Are you thinking that? I think that's two questions. Sorry.
Okay. So if we were to go with an individual food service director, the normal process would give them a three-year contract. So that would mean that the, we would be committing, or I would be committed to the person again, I believe food service would be hired under my office, if we would be making a three-year contract. I, you know, that would be normal unless I had some serious concerns about the individual that I was hiring to ask somebody to come and give up a job that they're in, because I wouldn't hire somebody that they're unemployed. I'll say a really good reason, but the people that are the top candidates are currently all employed, would have a three-year contract. So again, this is really a wholesale change for the district. It's something that we have talked about when, you know, and again, this is just very briefly, I know it's so late, but about three years ago, when I took, when I became superintendent, we discovered as part of the revolving subcommittee that there was this very large deficit that had been building up over time. And one of the things that the committee chose to, well, we didn't have a choice actually, was we paid off that amount of money out of our E and D fund and we took the food service director's salary and put it in the budget. And so we have been able to maintain, but we are funding the budget, the director's salary out of our budget. We also pay for all of our workers' insurance out of our budget. So, you know, it is a program that costs us money. The hope is that we could get to the point that there's either a director or Chartwell's, that that does not have to be funded out of the budget. I mean, that would be my personal hope, is to get to that point where we're back to at least a level playing field where we don't have that cost of the director's salary. That's sort of my goal. So the people that I'm looking at are in situations where they have been successful and that's sort of obviously what we all want.
Any other questions, comments from you?
But, but again, I mean, I, you know, I wanted, I wanted, you know, and I wanted you to, and we discussed, I wanted you to see what the options are out there. You know, again, we do have some strong food service director candidates. Chartwell's is a strong company. You know, again, there's surrounding districts, as I mentioned, that have been very happy with them. There are districts surrounding us that had Chartwell's that chose to go back to a food service director. It's about fit and, you know, we are at the point that we will have to make a decision pretty quick and I really appreciate it. I feel terrible you had to make two and a half hours. I'm so sorry.
We learned a lot.
Yeah, I think you know more about what's up in life than you guys do.
So just for the record, Joy, when would you want a decision, direction from the committee on the proceed? I know time is of the essence.
Right, right. Well, we're going to meet again on the twenty-eighth and I guess we could talk a little bit about it at that point. So, but, but again, you know, and again, I just.
Motion to amend the agenda on the excuse.
Yes, right. But, but I guess what I, but what I wanted to say was, you know, if we're going to go with the food service director, person, I really feel we would need to make that decision now because I would be taking that person from another school district. And as a professional, I would not do that to someone else, to delay. So in my mind, I'm sort of more on, on a real time.
You need one direction right now?
Well, I, again, I wanted you to have the information, you know, if you wanted to give me some information towards the decision, I'm not looking for you necessarily to make a decision. If someone says, I have strong feelings, I very much want to go, you know, have you look further into Chartwell's, have them do the analysis, have them come, I'm information gathering and have you come along for the ride.
I'll just say good luck. Everything's on your shoulders is what she's saying, so good luck with the quick decision.
I'd say continue to look into this option because of the lack of success we've had to certain degree doing it. I was saying David Cioli did a fantastic job in rating the ship and getting us on a good course, but he didn't have the time and opportunities to think in the creative and innovative ways that an organization like this can just because of the scale of the operation. So I encourage you to continue going down this path. No formal vote, just opinions. We'll leave it at your capable hands.
Intervene by someone to cater to the school maybe?
We do that.
Thank you so much.
Matt, Lauren, Erin, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Harvey. Thank you very much. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Sorry I wait so soon.
It's not the latest meeting I've ever been to.
You guys aren't doing too bad. I think we're running about another two hours.
Thank you so much.
Ladies and gentlemen, bringing you back to the top of the 2018 meeting. We already have one amendment to be made to two amendments.
Well, I mean, the friendly pieces do it.
Go ahead.
I don't think Mary Poppins was here.
Mary Poppins should be stricken from the others. Hold on.
She, they did say Mary Poppins' song.
And?
I didn't sign in when I came and I was here, so.
So you're not on?
I'm not on this list.
Okay.
Apologies, I didn't realize there was a decision.
Leslie to the list of others.
Others present.
Was there two friendly amendments to striking Mary Poppins and then adding Leslie to the others present? Do I have a motion to accept the minutes from the Thursday May ten, two thousand eighteen minute meeting? Thank you. Second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right. Close? You don't have to vote, but you may.
Abstain.
Abstentions? Abstention for voting. All of them. Jim, it's you, a host, you're up next. You want to yield the floor since you're working?
Definitely.
I would yield the floor.
Might as well take another item.
Thank you. Good evening. I would make it very quick this evening. The first item on the agenda for me tonight is graduation. I'd like to thank our school committee, our staff, and especially our student volunteers who really made senior events and senior week leading up to graduation so special for our graduating class. Graduation was a success. It was outdoors, the rain held off. There was one drop that hit my cheek and rolled off the program in the middle of the ceremony, but we all looked at the sky and said, hold off, hold off, and it worked. Leading up to graduation, we had our senior awards night. We have over one hundred and seventy thousand dollars in scholarships given out to our students that evening. And I'd like to extend a special thank you to our elementary and middle school administrators and staff and students for once again hosting our seniors on our senior parade. The event grew a little bit more from last year and it's become a pretty special tradition for our seniors. So thank you. We hosted step-up day last week across the district. Second graders went up to the KIS, sixth graders across the district came over to the middle school, and then the eighth graders walked over to the high school. They retreated to a choir performance in auditorium, an informational session in a large group room, and then an activities fair in the cafeteria where they had an opportunity to meet with upperclassmen and get a sense of the different clubs and sports and organizations that we offer students at that school. We will do more in-depth freshman orientation on August seventeenth. That is something that both parents and students will be invited to over the summer. Last night, we held our Evening Excellence Awards where we gave over four hundred awards out to over a hundred and thirty students. This is a special event each year, not only because it acknowledges the hard work and effort that our students put into during the school year, but the whole program is run by the teachers and it really is, it's all hands on deck. They all volunteer to solicit nominations and print out the certificates and run the whole program. So it's kind of nice as administrators to step back and not have to worry about planning an event, but I think it's just special and meaningful in the sense that the teachers acknowledge the hard work of their students throughout the year, so I'd like to thank them. Final exams start next week, Tuesday through Friday. We have half days on June twentieth, twenty-first, and twenty-second, and we do anticipate to be able to send report cards home digitally by June twenty-sixth. Grades are due by the end of the day on June twenty-second, obviously the last day of classes. Our counselors come in for an extra week after the teachers and students leave to make sure that we have all of the grades in and score some last things away for our master schedule. And then once we are sure and certain that we had everything in, we will hit send on those report cards for families and students. And lastly, I would just like to acknowledge the many student groups and leaders who made this past year so successful, as well as our staff for making it a wonderful year and we're looking forward to, I'm looking forward to year two next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Gill. Any questions, comments, or Principal Gill?
I do, well, first of all, you and your staff are just rock stars. I mean, honestly, just, I might cry, but I'll refrain. It's just, it's impressive and it's just really, I've been watching it for a while now and it's just incredible and your first year was just stellar, so.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. With all that nice, fun stuff said, I did ask, you had college acceptances on your list, but you didn't, and I know there's a thing in here, so.
Thank you for the reminder. So, yeah, there is a handout of all of our college acceptance lists from the class of two thousand eighteen this year. It's double-sided sheet that the counselors put together for us and we're assuming a sense of the institutions that our students are going to that were accepted for next year.
Yeah. So I just had a question and I did actually send my question to Mr. Garofalo, but I haven't heard back yet, but, so your guidance counselors, I mean, they do yeoman's work. I mean, the experience I had with my daughter this year, I mean, the guidance counselor she had was absolutely incredible. I mean, really just did a lot of work and I can't even imagine how many students each guidance counselor has, probably what, three hundred ish? And then probably a hundred seniors each, about that. So, I mean, it's incredible. I did note that I was sort of a little surprised by the list and, and I guess this is a little bit of a critique, but it's more of a question. So I noticed on here that there is not a single college acceptance from any school in the top thirty-one of US News and World Report. So like, we're getting into college, but we're really not getting into the most, you know, sort of the highest ranking colleges. I'm not suggesting it really is sort of Harvard or anything of that nature, but it did strike me, I kind of looked at the list and I, because, you know, I didn't see it until scholarship night, I guess. And it is impressive, the range of schools they're getting into, but I asked Mr. Garofalo to give me some information on whether or not it's that they're not applying and, or that they're applying and not getting in. And obviously, I can go into Naviance or go into an individual school and see who applied and who got accepted. I mean, it would take me a while. But I do think that we have an academic issue here in terms of college acceptances, where either we're not encouraging our kids to apply to the top schools, or they're applying and not getting in. And I guess I would like to know kind of which one it is. And I bet it's a combination of both.
Yeah, I mean, without seeing the data in front of me, I would say it's probably a combination of both. And we have had in the past Harvard acceptances.
Yeah.
Yep, Juilliard, you know, each class, I would say, is also different in terms of their personality and where they want to apply and what they focus on.
Yeah.
Can I add a little bit to that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Just one of the things that Mark Guadaboni always used to poke me, every time the SAT Just, one of the things that Mark Guadaboni always used to poke me, every time the SAT scores would come out, every time our AP test scores would come up, he'd say, "Hey, do you see that?" We were constantly at the top in Massachusetts, which you know, being the top in Massachusetts means we're the top in the world. If we were our own country.
Yeah, it's true.
We, so.
And so I know that, so that's why I'm sort of wondering.
I just wanted to offer, you know, there, there's multiple reasons we could never really come down to it. That's one list, which is subjective in and of itself. You know, if you look at the Fortune 500 companies, less than half of them went to elite schools. Most, most CEOs, CFOs, COOs actually went to state colleges and universities. And I know some of those are in the top 31 as well, but some of it's financial as well. If we could, we could send our kids anywhere, maybe that list would be a little bit different, so. Again, I applaud the question, and if there is anything we can do to encourage and to look deeper potentially, absolutely.
Thank you. I want to speak to that. My son went into all the schools he applied to, so went wherever was one of them. I, like many of the people in our community, am not wealthy, but that school cost $52,000 a year. That, that might be a little more, so.
And I guess to support that, you know, having spoken to, to some families, not as many as I wish I had the ability to, but the cost of the applications, you know, that families are choosing to have their children apply to schools they believe they can figure out financially how to afford, or that have scholarship programs that they believe they might qualify for. You know, one of the things that has made me really sad as superintendent is to hear from some of our former students that might graduate from some of those schools but pay $200,000 in debt.
Sure.
You know, and, and it is just heartbreaking to me that they're beginning their life with that over their head. You know, I think that the communities, we have absolutely over the years had children get in, but the families haven't been able to afford to send them to it. So, it's, you know, it's, it's tough decisions. I know you've just lived through the year of, you know, going through that and, you know, all of those things, but I think each of the families makes decisions on what they believe is the best for their children. So I think to, to Jason's point and Michaela's point, I think it's, it's really a combination of all those. Some of it is what the families can afford, what they think is realistic. I mean, the applications, you know, as you know, are not in this case of. You know, they have to make decisions. Sometimes they, they have applied. I think we have pretty good, pretty good acceptances. And the other thing is that many families often will go to a community college for two years and then they switch for that cost savings. And you can see that there are many community colleges, you know, but that works for, for many families, so it's a combination.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I do, I mean, I appreciate all that. I mean, having gone through it, I have, you know, she did apply to some schools. I'm looking at like, how the heck would we ever pay for that, right? Again, but they also have a lot more A to give, and, and they did. So, sometimes it's just as equal as, I mean, she's going out to a public university, that's fine. I don't care. That's great. But I just, it just struck me, I guess. And I, I just wonder if it's sort of like, are they not being encouraged? Or they don't think they're gonna get in? I mean, I guess I'd like to know.
It's still a valid question. I totally agree.
I don't know, but there's also William and Mary, which is phenomenal. There's Trinity.
That's top, that's 32, by the way. That's, that's number 32 on the list. Yeah, top 31 is.
But I was going through this and I'm comparing, my son graduated three years ago and I'm, I'm looking at this list and I'm like, there are some very decent schools here. There was a girl accepted to Harvard last year. I mean, that's, I know it's all in its own world. But, you know, to me, it's amazing. There's some very good schools here and there's some very accomplished people who've come from many of these schools. They're absolutely amazing. And the neat thing is, so, I don't know, they, these are just acceptances, not where they're going. But it was also impressive that there are kids who are looking to branch out as far across the country as what we see on this list, which I think is impressive, too.
We've seen that trend lately in the last several years. There's a growing population of students who are looking to go to school down south, for example. You know, I think two or three years ago, there were 15 students who all ended up in University of South Florida together, you know. I'm exaggerating that number, but it was a relatively large group for our graduating class. And, you know, I think another thing that they're up against is they go to a great school in a great state with very competitive colleges right in this area. You know, it's when you sit on the college side of it and you look at the admissions process, you know, they have quotas that they have to meet as well. Unfortunately, we're competing against, you know, that, that smaller population from this area to try to get into some of these great schools in our areas.
The other question I just have quickly related to it is, I think there are a number of students who did apply to the schools that are above that sort of line. And I guess it would be interesting to do a little bit of self-reflection as to sort of, why didn't, why might they not have gotten in? You know, because just, I think that there, I think it would be a useful exercise. Because could we be helping them with their application in a different way? Could they be presenting themselves in a different way? I mean, if you look at the numbers, to your point, and some of them fit right in all the numbers, but they don't get in. So what, what are they not, what is not being presented, I guess? Just some feedback.
A lot of it is, is, it's quotas. I mean, much pride, but my son had a 4.8 here. He had a 35 out of 36 on his ACTs. He had seven AP exams and he had par picks on a lot of them. He didn't get into, now, I know. He didn't get into Harvard, didn't get into MIT, didn't get into Tufts, didn't get into Brown. The only other thing he did, he didn't do a lot of clubs. He just did hockey. You know, so I mean, that was it. Now, granted, that was probably 40 hours a week, all year round, and he dedicated, but. So, you know, it's kind of a bummer, but a lot of it is quotas, too. And there were kids who got full, full rides to Northeastern where he was accepted. They got full rides and they had much lower GPAs and test scores than him. And I'm like, why? They were from out of state. So I think there are kids here who are getting into schools that are still very expensive. I mean, my son got half scholarship, but not full ride, so. But even half, they still have to come up with 30.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just kind of interesting because, you know, I would tell, we have a joint PhD program with MIT. So I see all these MIT kids there in my lab. I have a Carnegie Mellon kid this summer. Like, I'm just sort of looking at them and going, what, what are their characteristics? I'm not saying people should go to MIT or Carnegie Mellon, but they're, they're incredibly impressive individuals. And it's not all academics. And so I'm kind of wondering, kind of figure out like, are you a contri, you know, cellist? Are you a, have you solved, you know, world hunger? Have you, like, I'm curi, I'm curious, you know?
There's apples out there. Harvard, I don't think the kids in our population are what Harvard is even looking for. I mean, they, they like to get students from all countries.
And they only take valid dorms. And Northeastern, by the way, is taking people from overseas because they pay full price.
Yeah, no, I know that's a trend, but anyhow, I just think some self-reflection in that area could be useful.
I'd like to commend the committee for the vigorous commentary on where our kids got into college at this hour. Jim, you're right.
Yeah, okay, so I'll be quick. So I, first of all, I just want to tell.
You spend two hours on football nights. I can ask a question about.
Oh, yeah, of course. So I just want to thank our students for coming tonight and presenting. I thought they did a really remarkable job. One of the things I did want to make mention is, one of the students that was here tonight is Evan Barkowski. He was also the scholar leader. So we elect two scholar leaders from our building. We go to a scholar leader dinner and we're, these students are recognized. And as I was sitting on, at the table, and, you know, the parents are there to represent, and the conversation all of a sudden digressed into what their future holds. And one of the things that he expressed at the table was that that experience opened up his eyes to what his future does hold. And I thought that was enlightening, that that experience touched him in a way that that's what he was expressing at the table when we start talking about. And of course, the night talks about, you know, goals and future. And I mean, that's what all those, you know, schools that come together and talking about with their scholar leaders. So I wanted to just express that. Also, my, my daughter was here tonight, so I don't know if you guys knew that or not, but she was one of the girls that spoke tonight as well, so she had an opportunity to experience that as well. I do want to just make mention of all the work that our teachers put in and all the work that these young individuals did for a convention convention. What a phenomenal job. So, I'm gonna move on just quickly, talk about some of the events that are coming up so we can hit that. We have the Evening Excellence that's coming up on Monday night. So that's when we invite our students to be recognized for some of their academic achievements over the two years here at the middle school. So that's kind of an exciting night. And we have our farewell dance to our eighth grade. That's coming up this Friday night. And we have our field day and movie night. That's coming up next Thursday. That's when our eighth grade takes the field and we do different events. And Leslie's been nice enough to coordinate that for us in the past. She did a wonderful job for us, so that continues, that tradition continues. And then they come back that night. So we have the field at night. We put our movie screen out there. We have like a 20-foot movie screen that goes up. They come back and they spend one of their final nights with each other here on the field and we play movies and we have popcorn and we have things. So it's really a nice event. So we have that. I will like to thank the high school for having their seniors come through. That really is an expressive moment when they come through and see their old teachers and see people giving hugs. And you can see to the teacher's faces after they, they parade through that, that that's very meaningful. And I want to thank the high school for starting that tradition and for continuing because it really was a wonderful tradition for us. So thank them for that. We had Step Up Day, which Michaela had talked about. Really wonderful day. Again, we have our presentation in the auditorium where we kind of talk about the school a little bit. They get a chance to see our band and our chorus. And they go off to see the students that they're gonna be with next year. And they get a chance to meet their teachers. And teachers get a chance to embrace their students that they're gonna have next year. And it's really that first time, that first meeting. And they always, you know, you always hear, you know, that first meeting, you don't get to redo that. So you want to make sure that that is a great experience. And I think that, again, and I'll, I'll say this again, but I think because we do that now, instead of the anxiety happening over the summer, because you have three elementary schools, three different times. They don't know what the other kids that they're going to be seeing as they go to those teams. Because they see it now, they get a chance to get excited over the summer, instead of being anxious about it over the summer. And so I really think that that went very well and I resonate with what Kayla said. And so that was Step Up Day. Our finals, we just completed our finals last week, so we're moving forward. So that was good for our kids. And today, I just want to make mention, we did a CPR class for our students through with, in conjunction with the Kingston Fire Department. Something that we are going, that's a tradition just started. And Joy and I had a conversation about that and my nurse, Nurse Beck, and we're gonna continue that. And I was very excited. I got some great pictures of kids here and it was overwhelmingly popular. We had filled the spots within two days. And we had a bunch of students that are very interested. So we're gonna continue that. And I, I sent emails out to all the parents who didn't get into this one to say, "Hey, we're gonna do this in the fall. You're gonna be top priority in the fall." And then we're gonna continue this in the springtime, too. So that went very well. And I want to thank the Kingston Fire for working with us to do that. I mean, safety always is the utmost importance and this helps that happen. And I guess that's it for you, so thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions for Jim? Great, onto Christine.
Thank you. The district signed a contract with first student August 2015. The contract included a three-year contract with two one-year extensions. We are now the end of the three-year contract and I'm looking for, both for this year, for me to exercise the option of opting to the two one-year extensions on the contract. The increases to those two years are, this next year, 4.2%, which was built into the budget, and 4.25% the year following that.
Are there any questions?
First students, transportation. It's my understanding, based on previous conversations, that there's not really a lot of choice in that game. Right now, there aren't a lot of options. The past two times we've gone to bid, we received one bid each time.
Yeah, it was, it was a very difficult negotiation. I basically was on my knees asking the lower rates. I mean, it was really tough to get them down on fours. We started out at.
Higher.
Like, almost double. So it was.
No options.
Yeah, really. And, and there was no competition, so I didn't have anything other than pleading.
There is actually some poking around at the state level right now about how the private bus companies have kind of staked out territories around the state. So you all get into the situation where you get one answer to it and it's called a bidding. And I worked for the state institution for 20 years until March, so. We are, we are digging around that topic at the state level right now.
I just want to ask that question. I know that there was a cost analysis done with transportation companies. Wonder if anything came out of that?
There were some minor recommendations they had. They had some, we have to transport everybody, so that's a, that's a piece of the puzzle. But they're looking at a slight viewpoint here. There was some work they thought that we could do with, where the buses can be parked, right? So that they can get to the district, they can get to where they need to be quicker, things like that. But it's not easy to find a lot that can handle 31 buses. So that, that was a challenge. That was a bit bad for us. They made some really minor recommendations of some, refinancing some routes, but you actually, in the town of Pluton, it's extensive in the size of the community. And students don't live all that close to one another. So it's not like we're going house to house to pick students up, or even a group stop could be quite a walk. So some of the recommendations weren't necessarily applicable to us. But there was nothing really clear that came out of that that we, they made some comments of maybe things that we could do on our, we're looking for RFP, RFP the next time. They could help us out. I'm not convinced it would get us more bidders. It's just, they're optimistic with the bits of like 31 bids and do what we have to do. So it was a good idea, I mean.
I was excited when we went through that exercise expecting something material to come out of it. And I was horribly disappointed that we, we didn't really see anything material come out of it.
Technically, it went really moral, as you would mean. We should have a bus go to every house and.
That'd be a long bus ride.
So are we looking for, go just for the one year or the one and the one?
We could do either.
I'll make a motion that we exercise the one-year option and to revisit them next, next year.
Any second? Second from Ed. Any further discussion?
Can I ask one question? If we do the one year, it doesn't change the price?
No, it doesn't.
Okay.
They have committed, that, that, they committed to that in their.
Okay.
And this in my newness, is this totally standard across every community around it that it's outsourced? I mean, I grew up, we have town buses. I'm just curious.
There are many combinations. For us, we contract everything out. So we do not own the buses. We do not own the employees. Other communities own the buses, but not the employees. Some totally, it's all in-house. They, the employees are theirs and the buses are theirs. So there's a great combination of what's up there.
So we're convinced that this is the fact. We should continue to go down?
We talked about this like a year ago.
That was the first time. Based on what's available to us right now, I believe this is the best option, of course.
I mean, we don't have the staff to run our own bus company money for it.
Can we talk, can we talk about that flash period?
And the money for these buses.
Yeah, we're having to do it. Even as a director.
Yeah.
And is it 4%, the reason?
4.2%.
4.2% for the FY19.
And did they say, how much of that 4.2% is the fuel increase for this year?
No, what we do is there's a fuel clause in there and we have now had to use this fuel clause in case the price doesn't go up dramatically or down dramatically.
Okay, so they, so they're operating 4.2 without considering fuel? Yeah. Okay.
Any further questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion of accepting the one-year extension for 4.2% say aye. Aye. Pose. Abstentions. It's unanimous. Thank you, Christine. Do you have anything else for us to say?
I just have some information for our new committee members. With the information that you received tonight in your package, there we'll find the financial on the blue sheets. I just wanted to, gotta give you a rundown of how that's organized. The first pages are summary of our monthly financial. That is followed by a detailed version of each and every appropriation. And it's organized by FUD code. And FUD code is department. It's equivalent to a department. So FUD code, the one for the superintendent's office, the principals level, teaching level, nursing, transportation, maintenance. So all of those categories are all, and that cover sheet are rolled up to one, one line. And then it's detailing each and every appropriation of the, of those lines. Some of the items that I wanted to mention to you is that in our budget, you do see an area called special education. That is different than what you see at the town levels for, on their financial reports. For us, the special education noted there is what happens within our buildings. It does not include any outside transportation, any outside tuition payments. It's only what's going on in our, in the middle school and the high school. And then we look at the warrants, the warrants that have circulated tonight, but they are also organized by FUD. also organized by FUND. So you'll see separate warrants for the operating budget, grants revolving student activities. So all of those are separated out. There are a few items that we do have their own individual warrants. One of those is school warrants, we do keep that separate. And then the other one that we keep separate is student activities. And student activities, although they're on our financial, they're on our financial statements that we've done annually, that's not our money. That money is for the students, by the students. So that's why you see a separate warrant. You see one for middle school and one for high school. And then this is the front part, the financial. Right now, we are starting to see many deficits. One of the areas that I wanted to mention for the deficits is payroll. And what does happen is with, in the negotiation in our budget, I include all the increases in one line, I mean, just middle school and high school, instead of breaking it down to all the different areas, library, nursing, special education. So what's going to happen is you start to see deficits in some of the payroll accounts, but you will see surpluses under the teaching lines for the middle school and the high school. And then those do all offset one another in the end. One of the other areas I wanted to mention is that we have struggled with our substitute lines this year, both in middle school and the high school. Each year that is a guess, just depending on what the circumstances are. And we do have several people that are on a long-term leave, so we will have savings in the traditional salary lines, but we will have a deficit in the substitute line. The next year, I just wanted to mention is homeless transportation. Like the elementary budgets, we do struggle with that here at the region. And right now, we have a deficit of $36,000 between middle school and high school. That will continue to grow. That does not yet include what's happening in June, so June will, at a closer level, we'll know that total number of this by the end. The difficulty with that, it's difficult to budget because each year is so different. And it's difficult to budget situations because some situations are for a week and some are the whole entire school year. So we try to take that a month at a time unless we have other information that will give us the ability to predict what's going to happen through the end of the year. And then I just wanted to mention maintenance. We have a struggle with some of our maintenance in-house this year. As you know, earlier in the year, we had a problem with our flow control box at the wastewater treatment plant. We had some repair work done to our storm drains and then the likes that were even in Saro Field. So those are the items that have risen to the level of a lot of discussion, but we had other products that have happened here, could be a water heater. There are just so many things that have happened. And we're trying to maintain our buildings with the envelope study and these things just happen in addition to that. So with all of that, we are looking at our accounts constantly. We're looking to see if we have better information to make decisions for the year. We will enter the balance, we're just working to establish that final balance. It'll be just making sure the schools have done, are going to commit to do for the year that we have completed, not any contracts that we have. So in our next meeting, we will have a final reconciliation of that.
In our July?
At our, I'm sorry, yes, at our July meeting, we will have a final reconciliation of that. Yes.
Well, can I say, this super helpful explanation, you're a person, I kind of read line of the whole thing today and was trying to figure out where deficits were. You know, I was adding it up and I was like, oh my gosh. But, but the lines that I noted you, were all the ones I was going to ask.
All of those, yeah. And then keep in mind, when the committee does vote, they vote the total budget, not we're not voting the individual lines. And then at the town level, they're voting their assessments. So that's a slightly different concept than we were. For here, it would just be they're voting our total budget. Any questions?
Thank you, Christine.
Thank you.
On to our Assistant Superintendent, Jill.
So in your packet, you will find a grant and donation, a series of grant and donation summaries. The first page is a comparison of grant allocations, state and federal grant allocation over the past 13 years. And you will notice a peak in grants in the 2011 school year. Over the past seven years, there has been a decline in grant funding and this is typical across the state. On page two, you can see specific allocations for each state and federal allocation, as well as we've added green e-ranks in the Kingston Foundation for Education. And this is why the total point of accounts is different than the first page because we added those categories. And to the far right, you'll find kind of a brief summary of how those grants are generally used. For those of you who have seen this type of summary before, you may notice that the special education grant 274 and the special education early childhood grant 298 and the academic support grant 625 have all disappeared. They are no longer available. The final pages of the packet highlight the many donations and outside grants that teachers and staff have been awarded this year by school. PTO support is not included in this report, but it is evident that our teachers are working to supplement funding through outside resources. And they have met some success in this area and we appreciate their efforts. So before I move on to curriculum instruction, excessive update, are there any questions on the grants and donations?
Questions, comments? Again, it's sad to see the erosion since 2011, but I'm very impressed by the amount the staff has tried to reach out for those $2 million.
And then what I'll do, because I know it's been a long evening for everyone, I'll just take a few items to highlight in the report, and that is the educational stability program review. That's something new for us, that's something, a new document review that we are required to participate in and show our compliance. And so with this, we were looking at the degrees to which we were compliant with homeless, foster care, and military-involved family regulations. And so I reached out to the homeless liaisons in each of our districts, Mike Bamory, Brian DeSantis, Catherine Pratt, and Peter Veneto. I reached out to Christine Healy for transportation information and Melissa Farrell for Title One information. And we worked together as a team to create documentation to demonstrate our compliance. I do anticipate a few areas of need, one being a couple policies that I believe MAS C will recommend sometime next year, that this committee will be asked to consider with regards to foster care and military-involved families. And then the other thing is, is that there may be another mandatory staff training involving these regulations for each of the three categories. That principals are used to providing a variety of mandatory trainings at the beginning of the school year, and this, I anticipate, will be another one of those requirements. But I wanted to publicly thank the people who have worked in a very short timeframe to produce a lot of documentation for a review that we've never done in the past and the state could not offer any exemplars or templates for. So we created all of this stuff pretty much from scratch. So it was, it was interesting and it was certainly educational and that was submitted. We will offer the course, Studying Skillful Teaching, with Research for Better Teaching, and starting in August, it will carry into the fall. This is, to summarize it, is really research-based best practices for teachers. And Silver Lake teachers are required to take this course within their first three years. So I'm happy to say that we will use Title One funds to make sure that we offer this course onsite for educators. And then the Sheltered English Endorsement Course has been approved. We are just waiting on times to be official before we notify our faculty formally. But we will have a Sheltered English Endorsement Course in the fall of 2018.
Jill, please.
So Sheltered English Immersion is what, is an endorsement that teachers of English language learners must obtain within, core teachers, within a year of having an English language learner in their class. And so as evaluators, people like myself, and as teachers, evaluators of teachers of English language learners and teachers of English language learners core, are required to receive this training so that we provide research-based best practices to try to help students succeed in general education classroom settings to learn content in subject matter. So it's, it's under the umbrella of Sheltered English Endorsement, but having, having taken the course, I can honestly say that they're just good sound practices that benefit all children, but it is something that teachers are required to do within a year. At first, the state offered it for free, but now it's a cost for teachers. And in addition, they maintain very tight control over the quality to an extent, but also it makes it very difficult to get an onsite training for your teachers. So we're, we're pretty excited about it.
The whole reason we do it is Massachusetts was soothed. We were found to be deficient in our training for teachers and teaching students with English as a subject. This is the result. It is a huge benefit to have the course onsite because it is one of the more rigorous courses out there. And the state actually has access to go on and look at who single teacher participates, submissions of their work, beyond just the instructor.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Thank you, Jill. Superintendent, Joy Lang.
Thank you. So I'm going to go super quick, because we just are hitting 10 o'clock here, so I'm going to use my Jersey voice, I hope you don't mind. So you have before you your draft calendar, we've talked about it over the last several months. And it is the same calendar that we have used over the last several years. The only thing that is slightly different over other years is the full professional development day that used to be the Tuesday after the mark of the King weekend. We moved that because it was in the middle of the prep for students, their study time for their finals, excuse me, their mid-years. So we moved it around the February vacation. Last year, we tried the Friday. It was somewhat confusing for some of our teachers because we have slightly different release times based on the school on Fridays, the teachers get to leave when the buses leave. So we moved the PD day to Monday. So now there is no question, everybody will be here eight o'clock. I like it nice and clean. So we're going to try Monday next year. Other than that, I am planning on closing school June 13th. I'm going to control the weather this year, I'm going to do my absolute best, so I'm sure there'll be snow days. But other than that, the calendar is the same as it always has been.
I'll accept any motion to sort of outright. Second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Excellent, thank you.
Any comments?
Meeting schedule. So throughout this year, and Mike has actually been somebody who's really been pushing this as part of the union, we've talked about trying to move our school committees so we will be on a six-week cycle other than budget season. And this is something that all the committees who are certainly interested in, we all appreciate that you're all volunteering your time and that you have lives and probably have something to do than to sit with us, even though I know you love every minute of it for four hours. So this schedule was put together based on the Old Rochester School District. They have the exact same makeup as us, I'm just going to talk quick, but I'm not sure Leslie or Gordon know this story. But Old Rochester has the same makeup as us, they have three elementaries and then a regional school committee. One of our teachers in, actually psychologist in Dedit, is the chair of one of the committees and she was kind enough to say, you really should try this, this is way better, and share the schedule with me. So I based our schedule on it. It is a puzzle to try to not have all the meetings simultaneously. When you put them all together on the same day, you can see why sometimes we get a little blah blah blah, trying to remember where we are and what we're saying. So this calendar is based on the premise that it would be every six weeks except for budget season. If you look, once we hit December, it's December, January, February, March, April, May, again, right during the budget season, if we wish to add meetings, all we have to do is vote it. Often Silver Lake does add another budget meeting in February. We usually need one more discussion to get it voted. There is one caveat, just so you know. If we were to move to this, we would need for you to vote to have someone be willing to stop in our office to sign our warrants because our bill collectors would still expect to be paid monthly. So I would want three of you, if you were willing to stop in, that it wouldn't be out of your way. Thank you, Laura, I appreciate some people shaking heads. That would be capable of stopping yet for us. We've already, yeah, we've already done this in Dedit. Yeah. Yeah. Right, exactly. And so, again, it would just be monthly and then we would report the warrants, we would have somebody from those three report the warrants, or Christine, or the, someone could talk about what aside when we're on that six-week cycle.
So we're able to have, under the Mass Modernization Act, to have one member from each town do a single?
It's just a subcommittee of three.
It's a subcommittee of three.
It does not have to be one from each town.
Okay.
And I'm already voted by Kingston to be a representative from Kingston to sign the warrant, so I'll be here anyway, so I'm willing to, because I gotta be here anyways for Kingston.
Well, it'll be a different schedule.
No, it won't. It looks pretty close.
Pretty close.
They are pretty close. Silver Lake and Silver Lake are usually close.
Yeah, so if you, if you're okay with that, that'd be great.
It's kind of an argument.
Yeah.
Christine, can you, I'll do it.
We need, no.
I know I was, yeah, so you gotta be willing to give me a call to come in.
What we would do is once the warrants were prepared, ready for signatures, we could send an email out to whoever that's...
So if it's, would it be Eric, is it, yes?
I'm volunteering, it's up to them to...
Laura?
Yes.
Okay. And did you want Eric?
I'll just, I'll put, oh, somebody prefered.
We need to, but I'll do it.
We've signed up for Halifax, they don't... No, no, not the elementary school, we have to...
We haven't, we haven't done it yet.
Are you on Halifax, though?
Yeah, yeah.
You might need more than three in that committee because what if someone's not available and you remember the four.
But that's it, your captain, Chris, and then?
Yeah, I'm always willing to be here.
Okay, yeah, you can try to buy them if I can, my trust. Okay, so would that be good? So we have four? And then hopefully three would show up.
Do you need three to sign? Is that what you're saying?
We need three to always sign.
For this committee, okay. For Kingston.
Why would you only need three when you need kind of all of us?
Under the Minnesota Modernization Act, we're allowed for the subcommittee of three individuals to sign the warrants.
Okay.
Yeah, you need at least the...
But for the town, we only need one.
Correct, yeah, we need one for the individual.
Regional. Right, right. Can I make a motion that we approve this schedule as just right?
I'll second it, I already put in my mind.
Any comments, questions?
I only want to sort of, if we can get it done, in less meetings. That benefits a lot. So maybe I'm just lucky.
As Joy said previously, at our discretion, we can all set meetings.
Ben, just a comment that we've always talked about it, that Dunnett is trying to get presentations as a group. So administration is not presenting the same thing four times. Just a thought.
We even discussed further at Sunday, here at Silver Lake, that potentially sometimes when we have our joint meetings with Silver Lake and the union, that we incorporate some of those presentations into those meetings. So all of us receiving at the same time, we can ask the questions together, so the administrators don't have to even repeat their answers. All right. Seeing no further questions or comments, all those in favor of the new meeting schedule?
I guess that's one more.
Go ahead, Mike.
Sorry, just, I know I want to get out of here, but on the joint school committee, we have an August meeting.
We're expected to have one in that time period, yeah.
The reason we need that, I argue, because I really like August off, I have to be honest with you, but Christine was pretty adamant. No, she is, I was thinking, I mean, that'd be available, that we have to award the bids for trash collection, health services, and sewage.
It's glamorous, thanks.
The really glamorous ones. So she did not feel she would be able to be prepared prior to that.
I'm working towards that.
So it's Christine's fault?
It's totally Christine's fault. There was quite a discussion in my office, I'm just saying.
All those in favor of accepting the new schedule, say aye. Opposed, abstentions, unanimous?
So as we've talked about for many years, Mr. Glass, our senior director, has applied for a grant, for a green pass. There was an award ceremony scheduled for Tuesday, which had been delayed, so the information is currently embargoed. But I can let you know that we've got some great news, or anticipate getting some great news for that, which we'll be able to share a little bit more officially. But the original award ceremony was Tuesday, so I had planned on being able to make a little bit more of an effect. So I planned on being able to make a little bit more of an official announcement, but read my lips. We're going to be really happy. I have no idea. I just took my glasses off. Oh, Chris, you had asked a question. Do you want to delay it since this is the hour? Thank you so much.
All right. So no new business unless anybody has anything they want to add to the next meetings, kind of?
I had one question. Does the school committee do walk around at the end of the year or beginning of the year to check out the buildings with?
We have never done that as a group since I've been a member of the principals of all these. Do we do a walk around of the buildings just to check the practices and what's going on? It's available to us, Gordon, and in town. And so those are quite accommodating.
I just thought maybe if this school, I mean, we're talking about issuing buildings. And I just thought maybe.
The only time I've done it, Gordon, is at times when the envelope study has been a pressing issue. We're talking about specific things. I've been brought around to, that's what we're talking about, that kind of thing.
Okay.
But if you want to maybe formalize it a little bit more and get a group together. Have something to do with that right now. All right. Also for new business, at our July meeting, I would like to have an executive session to discuss some safety concerns, issues, ideas that shouldn't be discussed in the public sector. It's just moving forward some plans that we've discussed in previous meetings about school resource officers and other security type issues.
Kingston School Committee meeting that we have on Monday, we have asked the administration to look at the companies that will do independent evaluation of the schools, to look at any and everything related to safety in our school. And we did want to talk to this committee and the other committee, Halifax and Clinton, and see if other folks would be interested. Going, moving down the road, we don't want obviously to put that cost in our operating budget, but a separate line item at our town meeting outside of our operating budget to spend the money on something. But obviously, if all four districts, they're delivering just more than one, there might be some cost savings in doing that. So Christine has already talked to some of her counterparts in the other four districts to find companies that will do that kind of work. Because we have some specific things that we want to do in some of our buildings in Kingston. And obviously, there are things that can actually be done here. Again, specifics in the executive session, but broadly, in broader terms, from an economic perspective, joining together and bidding clauses.
So do you think we potentially would have enough information by July 12th that we could have necessarily? So just knowing we can add to the agenda.
Yeah, and we may want to put in a meeting, 31 meeting as well, just to broach this topic. I mean, it's not going to happen anytime soon because we've got to get it on, get it rolling. Yeah, in the town meeting more and all that.
Absolutely. Okay, no old business. The S L B A was wise and went home a long time ago.
They did ask me to share that they are all until the end, but they needed to have a great period.
Admin review?
I'm sorry, just backing up. I'm sorry. I was raising my hand.
No problem, sorry.
I know it's super late, but can you just clarify for me what we're doing on the 28th? Because are we, I'm concerned, we just put a new meeting on the agenda. And I'm wondering, like, are we going to get an analysis of all the different options and the pros and cons of each on the 28th? Like a written one that's going to show us the differences? Are we just going to hear for the first time the different options? Because if we are only going to hear the different options, I think that's all we should do is hear the different options. I think, I think we should be deciding. I don't think.
I think that's a fair and valid opinion on the topic. I think we have to wait and see how things roll out between now and then.
So what gets to add on that, so is Mrs. Jameson responsible for putting together a solid document that looks at all the options and the pros and cons and the costs and the analysis and all that? Is that what we're going to get before this meeting?
It seemed like we tasked Martha tonight with doing a lot of that legwork. She requested some assistance from our facilities director and any guidance that Joy and Christine could probably supply too. I believe that's what we tasked her with tonight. Are you thinking?
No. Well, I was just going to say, I mean, two weeks is not much time.
No.
So I'm not exactly sure what your expectations are. But in two weeks, I can't imagine she's going to be able to do much other than to touch base and get some other resources.
The only thing I was going to add to that, and again, I'm recused, so I'm not debating or giving opinions, kind of what I was told. Mr. Timbissado said to me that he has some ideas. And so I think he's going to be talking to people again, whether it's fundraising or not, or whatever. So I think he's going to come back with some ideas and whether he can take action on it or not, I can't. But whether you take action on it or not would be, I wouldn't decide today that you're, that you are or not going to take action on something you have no idea about from two weeks from now. I'd make that decision in two weeks.
We knew when we put $100,000 into the capital plan for this item that, well, we hoped it was going to cause the ground swell you've seen in the last two years. We, we really desired some commitment and some motivation from the community on this topic. Because as members who were on the committee during the budget season last year will tell you, we were cutting. We were pulling back. We were trying to make peace with the free towns and what they were financially able to do. And justifying $316,000 for lights was just untenable. But at the same time, we wanted with $100,000 to show that we realize this was something important. We want to put our commitment to it, a third of the cost from our capital plan. And I couldn't be happier with the outcome so far. But I would like to show some good faith movement for those kids and for our communities. So.
We said yes to an extra meeting, so that's.
We might not, right, we might not get the, I don't know, the most amazing breakdown. But we might find a couple more glimmers of hope. There might be something, a pathway we can go down temporarily so we can have more time to fulfill the desire to have a comprehensive plan placed before us.
I just think the setting expectations is super important. And, you know, I got a lot of questions from the community about what was going to happen tonight. And I didn't have an answer for them because we didn't have an answer for that. Nor did we have full information to make the decision, in my opinion. So I just want to make sure that we're going to have missed it. Aside from the light issue, the, the community needs or wants, really, to be honest, wants. That, that's important, but we have to do what's best for our overall mission. So I'm just thinking that it would be nice to be able to set expectations for the community that we may not have a decision next month, next, in two weeks. Because we may not have, might be the first hearing all the information.
And we, it's a battle scenario. We have to come up with a budget outside that. You know, we need 35 grand to rent the temporary stuff. We've got to come up with it, you know, and get them to fundraise that, great. They can't do that side of it. And we are kind of in a really tight spot, even for a bank.
Sounds just, uh.
I don't think it's crazy. Mass Highway has lights sitting in whatever route it's through.
Well, I don't know on the highway because they use them every night.
I know what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we are in a really tight spot.
But we need all the options on the.
We do. I'll look into Rizzo's more.
Anybody who comes up with any idea, please bring it before.
I agree. Yeah. Ed, I didn't think any of your thoughts were off base. Sometimes something that you don't think is viable sticks, so.
I just think there should be some kind of point of, like, when you get information about Rizzo, it gets rolled into a document that Martha's put together. Like, there needs to be one place where all these things reside as opposed to a lot of the person coming up and saying, "Well, I know this can't happen." It's like, well, okay.
If you would like, if anybody has ideas, if you'd like to send them to me, we'll set up a Google Doc through the administrators and we'll share whatever you get. Most of, all of you know my email, so feel free to send it to me and I'll make sure to get it to Martha.
I actually had somebody ask me, "Okay, the polls are on, but what happened to the lights?"
They were not usable.
It's been that way for years.
Okay, because, um.
No, no replacement.
Guy who has resources that was here, he said, "What about the light transfer? Lights is different."
No, they're, they burn.
We were going to donate them or sell them and nobody wanted them. They were that bad.
Well, I was going to suggest a motion to, the motion from our, to limit the.
Just a question. Is it worth inviting the Kingston Rec Committee to come to our next meeting? If that's an option that you want to bring forward?
The next step that they said, I'm looking for my, that email right now, it's on the, it was to take, they wanted to know specific dates. So she wanted me to fill out an actual request form. I said, "What are the dates? What do we need?" And she looked at the calendar, see if it really makes a mess in terms of they're already committed to a tournament that's there that Friday and that Friday didn't work. So my question to Dr. Joy or Martha, what games on football do we have night, noon, and Friday? Three?
They'll also want to do compression testing to make sure, you know what I mean?
I don't know if that means that. That's the first time I've heard that tonight.
So what that means is a field has to have enough gear. If it's been compacted down, the size of these kids, when they hit the ground, just hitting the ground causes concussion. Little kids, it doesn't affect it as much, but the, I mean.
Do you think we have that information?
It's a test. I mean, Martha would, would have to, I don't know, we do it ourselves or contract somebody. But they do compression testing of every, like turf, turf fields too. Every field, but a grass field especially, because if it's been overplayed, there's not enough gear. And when you hit, you get a concussion. So it's a safety thing and then there's insurance. So if something happened at that rec field, the town of Kingston field, is it the town of Kingston that's liable? You know what I mean?
Right.
But it's not a problem.
They would probably ask us to provide a certificate of insurance for that to happen.
Yeah. So the email that I just probably pulled up, dates, times, number of people attendees, coaches, players, whatever you might get for a, for a town. That's really all she wanted, you know, so the concession stands. Go through Silver Lake Football if they're using it at the time. And obviously conflict with softball today, which is not a part of the multiple sports. So I'd be happy to afford an email to you, Dr. Joy, and I'll, if you give me the dates or if Martha gives me the dates, I'd be happy to read and send them through. Because the rental's a hundred bucks an hour for a field. If you need it for four hours, and we have police detail, my math says a thousand bucks for a night game maybe.
Police detail.
Do we do that during our meetings?
I'm just speculating. I'm speculating on my end on that one.
I think it depends on the numbers.
Yes, okay. Oh, you're right. Yeah.
And the only other thing I wanted to add is, again, remember we have soccer in the fall, so.
Yeah, and we can look broader.
Soccer has already been talking to the rec department, I. But, but they have.
They don't, they don't press you to that.
What's that?
They need compression tests too?
I don't know. They don't tackle. They, they're hesitant to hit each other. That's their problem.
So with that being said, I was going to make a, a motion to amend from earlier to limit the discussion to make sure we don't make a decision. It sounds like, well, I think we could. I think we could. We're not saying whether we won't, but I think, you know, at least maybe now I'm down the options. I think we don't know until we get there.
I agree with the question, but I should, I don't think we should limit ourselves.
So just for clarity, if anybody wonders why we talked about it again, that's, that's why. Because I was going to make that motion, but no.
You good?
Yeah, I'm good.
It's a good point. I mean, I think we need to be cautious. We need to, we need to tread light. If a solution presents itself, we need to avail ourselves to vote.
Could I ask you another item to be emailed to us is the, the full plan, the full capital plan? We can get the full capital plan for all the new members?
The five, the five-year plan?
Yeah, we have last time.
With the one-page.
I just have the one-page.
The one-page is this year, we haven't done anything with the thing going forward. Our former five-year plan, this was sort of the last year, so there wasn't anything. So all we did at our last S F R, sorry, I got carried away there with S, meeting. Meeting.
We just introduced the same.
Meeting was, we made a list of all the different ideas. So we don't really have a normal five-year plan at this point. Yeah, what we have is a list, if you remember. We didn't do more than throw everything that all the administrators got on it. So the numbers are outrageous. It's not a real.
Sort of everything we might put into it.
Yeah, yeah, you're in order in that.
I can absolutely do that. But just so you understand, it's really not a real capital link at this point. It's just a list.
So I'm going to get this out of there. No, no, we have to go through it. Career and technical head, we lost our two juggernauts from that subcommittee, Mark Wodovoni and Mark Augry. So we really need some people who are interested in CTE, which is half of our school, to come and join us on that. Chairman's report, legislative agents report, they're still talking about the budget. They don't know what finalized yet. Jim and Michaela and I have been drafted by MASC to develop a vaping presentation to give on the South Shore. MASC wants us to host it potentially here in the fall with interest in us packaging it in a way that it can be presented throughout the state that is popular enough. We'd be invited to come down to the MASC, MASSS Joint Conference down in Miami, either this fall or next fall. So thank you to Michaela and Jim for coming on board to help me out with that. We're also looking at either the district attorney or the attorney general having a representative as part of that and also somebody from the medical field as well. Yes?
Jason, can I just ask, going back to chairman's report, do you want to just mention Mike's appointment to the committee?
Sure. Mike got appointed to the committee because we had the resignation of one of our longstanding members, Maureen Springer. Maureen did run for reelection and was elected by the town of Clinton again because they had faith and her service to this committee. The history we've lost in the past few years on this committee is tremendous. And Maureen was the strongest advocate you could have ever asked for for students. She did acknowledge to me, there was some, somebody that she would like to follow in her footsteps. I've talked with Mike to see if he would be interested in coming on board. He's the chair of Union 31. He served on the Dennett Elementary School Committee for three years and taken on subcommittee roles and leadership the whole time he's been there. I brought Mike before the board of selectmen in Clinton on Monday night. And they were thrilled beyond belief that it was going to be Mike to fill the seat left vacant by Maureen. So Mike is with us for a one-year appointment until May of next year. Where I hope he will then run for a two-year term. So welcome aboard, Mike.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
You're welcome.
All right. Yes?
Right. Did you send a letter, what did you send to all the members that did not return? For their service?
No.
Nice quote. Classic, like that. All right. Negotiation for the Relations Safety Subcommittee, no meeting. PAC, our PAC representative stepped down. Again, that is a committee, that, subcommittee that really needs a strong representative policy. We luckily had none of those. We had to run in earlier to share revolving funds. There's been no meeting. SAFER, no meeting, but again, we've lost both of our chairs at that committee. That's the committee that controls the capital plan. So please consider joining us on the SAFER Subcommittee. School starts time. No meeting. Treasurer's report?
Yep. I guess that's me. We have 17 warrants rolling around. 14 of them are accounts payable, three of them are payroll. The accounts payable come out to be $1,024,789. The three payroll ones come out to be $2,495,796. Grand total is $3,519,864. And again, and in advance, please excuse my speech impediment and my dislossen.
Just what you want, the treasurer.
Do you want to ask that question?
No meeting?
Future meeting dates, we have a meeting June 28th that will be discussing the lights and potentially the food service. The last day of school will be prior to that on June 22nd. And we have our July meeting on the 12th after the holiday. I will entertain a motion to withdraw.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Nice job, Jason.
Awesome, thank you.
Another one.